Good evening, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, we'll start with Member Ashby. Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Era, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
We do have a quorum. This meeting is broadcast live this evening. There will be a replay on Saturday at 7:00 PM on Metro Cable, Channel 14. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker slips are located in the back of the room on the ledge. If you wish to speak one, please complete the form and turn it into the assistant clerk at the front. We also have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices should you need one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask Officer Justin Freeman to please step forward to the Pledge of Allegiance, and after the pledge, I'd like to tell a little story, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Officer Freeman.
Yes, sir.
You may wonder why we asked you up here tonight to do the Pledge of Allegiance, but we want to, on behalf of a grateful city, say thank you to you for the following. Just this past Saturday, the 25th of February, we are told that you noticed smoke and flames coming from the garage of a pocket area residence on your way to another call. You approached the home, you found a family inside who told you that their grandmother was inside, and you immediately did your duty, at risk to yourself, and ran inside to find her. You found the elderly woman in the house, but she only spoke Cantonese. And fortunately, and this is, you know, what they say, "What is luck when preparation meets opportunity?" You just happened to have a ride-along with you that could translate Cantonese, and you helped calm the elderly woman and assured that she was safe. And these are the kinds of acts that I know go on every day in our city by the men and women who wear the uniform, both the police and fire departments. And it's important, I think, as a city, that we call it out and that we recognize these acts, because certainly, y'all get recognized when things don't go so well sometimes. And so, thank you for doing your job and doing your duty, but putting your own life at risk and for serving our city so well. Please, you have four minutes.
I don't know about that. Good evening to you. Thanks for having me come here. I just want to point out that any police officer in that situation, working for this city, would have done exactly what I did. This is our job, and we love doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's what I expected, a lot of humility. Appreciate it very much. Give him another hand, okay? That's the right way to start the meeting here, everyone. Does the city attorney have a closed-session report?
Mr. Mayor, we have nothing to report out of closed session.
Very good. Thank you very much. We have one special presentation, and we'll get to the consent calendar. I'd like to, would the clerk please read?
Sure. This is recognizing February 26, 2017, as Sacramento Area Animal Coalition, otherwise known as Spay Day 2017.
Very good. Councilmember Harris.
So, is Josie Moody in the audience? Can you come forward to the microphone, please? Thanks for coming, Josie. So, can you explain to people what the Sacramento Animal Care Coalition is and what Spay Day means in terms of animal care throughout the city?
Sure. So, the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition is a completely 100% volunteer-run nonprofit. We provide low-cost spay and neutering services for low-income families in Sacramento and Yolo Counties. And for the past 18 years, we've been doing a Spay Day every February. So, this Spay Day, can I go on? So, I wrote a little something, because I'm nervous. So, on behalf of the Sacramento Area Animal Coalition, I would like to thank the council for this recognition. This past Sunday, Sacramento Area Animal Coalition spayed and neutered, microchipped, and provided core vaccinations for nearly 300 animals in the greater Sacramento area. As I said, this was our 18th Spay Day, and through this event alone, through all the years, we have altered 10,000 animals in our region, preventing the unnecessary suffering of countless animals. And through all of our programs that we run year-round, collectively, we have spayed and neutered over 30,000 animals in the last 18 years. So, I'd just like to thank you for this honor.
Well, you know, I think people need to realize what a big problem it is with unwanted animals in the city and county of Sacramento. It is a big problem, and it's very costly, and it's really inhumane to let animals be born that we then destroy. And it's something that we don't want to do at our animal shelter, so the preventive work that you do is invaluable. It really is. So, thank you for your efforts, and believe me, what you do saves the city a tremendous amount of money and anguish, because, you know, nobody wants to put an animal down. So, again, we appreciate your efforts. So, I won't read the entire resolution, but I did want to point out that we really appreciate what you do. It's a big service.
Thank you.
So, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize February 26, 2017, as Spay Day in the city of Sacramento, and thank the many citizens who have come together in service to the community to make this day a reality. So, if you don't mind, I'll get a picture with you. I'll... Thank you, Josie. How about a hand?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harrison. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, for all the good work on these sets of issues. Okay, we have a consent calendar.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have items 1 through 18 on the consent calendar. Item number three, Member Warren would like to say a few words before the vote there. Item number nine, I need to read into the record that on the recommendation, the second line where it says "responsible bidder," should say "responsive bidder." So, we'll make that correction. I have no other changes, additions, or corrections to the consent calendar. So, I have no one signed up to speak on the consent calendar either, so we'll go to Member Warren.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. There are some representatives from District 2 here. Would they come up to the, come up front, please? Larry, Mervin, Dr. Clavo, and team, Ross Hendricks, why don't you come up as well? So, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the council, the people that you see standing up at the podium represent a very important part of the city of Sacramento and District 2, and in particular, the Del Paso Heights community in Sacramento. Some of you may have noted that for the past year, District 2 had the highest drop in crime rates in the city. And I want to present to you the gentlemen and woman who are chiefly responsible, along with our public safety officers and our police department, with helping to make sure that District 2 is on the right path, and we are, we've turned over a new leaf, and we got leadership in this community and voices of people who can reach other people and are really committed to making a change. And so, without going into the background of each of them, but I will point out that you, Dr. Clavo, some of you remember J.J. Clavo, who was a grant football player who was tragically shot a couple of years ago and passed away. That's his mom, Dr. Clavo. Mervin Brookins and Larry Craig are leading a nonprofit that's committed in our community to bringing people that have had challenges in their life together, to really help them on the right path and to turn around our community. Ross Hendricks is the president of the Del Paso Heights Neighborhood Association, and although relatively new to the community, has been very active and really playing a very important role in the community. And then, the other brothers that are standing up here, I will have to say, are some of the most important people in the community. Charles, I want to say thank you for being here. You guys, thank you guys for being, these are some of the gentlemen that have the influence in the city of Sacramento and have the ability to help some of these youngsters find the right path, and we're going to be counting on you to do it. I think the action that the council is going to take tonight is really going to support and help along that, along that path. And next year, we're looking for, I mean, all of this year, but next year, when they come out with the, with the results, we want to, we want to see the trend continuing, going in the right direction for crime in our city, and in particular, as it relates to District 2. So, I want to say thank you guys very much, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you. So, thank you, guys. Please give them a round of applause, you guys. There's an item on the, on the calendar, item number three, that there was a perception that my wife, Dr. Gina Warren, there was a conflict in this particular item, but I wanted to state for the record that it was determined that it was not a conflict, but also, my wife is an unpaid volunteer for a nonprofit in our community that is helping to do some of the same things that these men and women were just up, standing up for, and so, but as a result of her volunteering with this nonprofit and with these young men and women, or men and women, I am going to recuse myself from voting on item number three, so that there is absolutely no confusion, no conflict, and we can continue to do the good work that's taking place in District 2. So, I'm going to leave the mic, I'm going to leave, actually, the dais and go in the back until after the consent calendar, but again...
You can vote on the remainder of this consent calendar.
I want to be extra, extra, because my, because there was, there was some confusion as it relates to conflicts, and I just want to make it very clear that my wife is not paid by the nonprofit, that potentially will receive a grant, or any organization for anything, the work that she does in the community is completely volunteer. So, with that, I'll excuse myself from the dais.
Okay, we'll see you in, we'll see you in about 90 seconds. Thank you. Will they make a motion?
Yeah, I do want to make the motion, but before I make the motion, I want to make the motion to move the consent calendar, and I just want to thank Councilmember Warren for bringing these community change agents, these community champions, to, to the council chambers, for us to be able to see them, and I encourage each one of us, whether we're sitting up here or whether we're in the audience, to go out and see the work that they do in the community. It's powerful work, it's making a difference for our city, it's making us great again, and I just wanted to thank them and give them another big round of applause.
The consent calendar, we do have, do we have public testimony on the consent? We do not. So, the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. We do have one abstention, as Councilmember Warren indicated, the motion will pass on the first 18 items, yes, on an eight-to-nothing vote with one abstention. All right. Act through door number two. Welcome, welcome. Very good. Members, we move to item 19, and I'm told that the staff has requested that this item be continued for a week. Is that correct?
To the 21st.
To the 21st, excuse me. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Measure is continued until the 21st of March. Let's now move to items 20 and 21, which I understand could be taken up together. Is that correct? Madam clerk?
Yes.
Separate vote, but...
They're together, but separate votes.
Okay, so, let's read both 20 and 21, and then we'll take them, separate vote.
Okay. So, item 20, then, is the code compliance case fees and penalties, and item number 21, housing in dangerous buildings, case fees and findings of fact for both.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor. My name is Carl Simpson. I'm your Code and Housing Enforcement Chief with Community Development. The items before you are the neighborhood code compliance and housing in dangerous building fees and penalties for special assessment liens and/or personal obligation. Item number 20, the Community Development Department administrative penalties and neighborhood code compliance case fees. Staff reports list an amended total of 82 properties with a sum of $120,337 of unpaid fees and penalties scheduled for liens and/or personal obligations against the property. Seven properties listed in Exhibit A of the staff report have a setup, have set up a payment plan and/or have paid in full and are identified as item numbers 6, 24, 54, 61 through 62, and 73 through 74. Item number 21, the housing in dangerous building case fee staff report lists an amended total of 44 properties with a total of $46,332.46 of unpaid fees scheduled for liens against the property. Three properties listed in the Exhibit A of the staff report have set up payment plans and/or have been paid in full and are identified as item numbers 1, 4, and 41. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the two resolutions separately as amended to allow the city to collect the unpaid fees by placing special assessment levies and/or personal obligations upon the properties.
We do have speakers. Please.
Okay, so, we have first, for both items 20 and 21, we have Sonia, and I believe it is Zabi Omari. Sonia.
Come on up, please.
And then, the second speaker for both items is Thompson, I believe it says Fell. And then, the last speaker on item 21 is Pastor Gainsborough.
Welcome to you. Please tell us your names again and which specific property you may be testifying about.
Sonia, last name is Gul, G-U-L.
Zabi Omari. The address is 16 Estrizem Court, Sacramento, California, 95834.
Okay, please proceed.
So, we built like a patio in the backyard, and so, we were not, we did not know, it was our first time to build something, so we did not know that we have to go to the city and get the permission or the, so we got the inspector coming to our house, and he told us that we have to do the paperwork for, for this, or get the, file the paperwork with the city. And we were in the processing, doing that, and then he come in a few times, and he told us not to worry, everything will be fine, and stuff like that, and then we got a letter with the, received something that we have to pay this much, the fee.
Councilmember Ashby, you want to ask some questions, please?
Mayor, I think it's me, 95834, I heard that.
District is this in?
Where do you?
Thomas.
You live in North Natomas or South Natomas?
North.
North, okay. Then it's me. So, Carl, what are, do we have some opportunities to work with them here, and can I have a, can my office have a chance to work with you and with these folks, and can we pull this one off and, and take a look at it separately?
Sure, we can do that. I do have one question, though. Did you go through the hearing process, the appeals process?
Yes. I went through the processing, but you know what? They say something different, and then when I called the inspector, and I said that the stuff that you said, that was not true, and then he said that, you know what, I know that was not fair, but I cannot be on your side.
Okay, Carl, just, we can probably resolve that if you wouldn't mind getting their information for me, and then I'll have someone from my team come down, too, and we could, we can talk a little bit more about it before we have final resolution. I'm glad you came tonight, so we would have an opportunity. Thank you.
Exactly the way to handle it, I think. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're not going to impose the lien, if you will, tonight, but it's an open question Councilmember Ashby's going to meet and to try to work with you, get the, get the facts and figure out if we can both help you, but also fulfill your obligation, okay?
No problem. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay. Very good. Sir?
Yes, my name is Thompson, last name Fu, P-H-U. I'm here regarding a property on 3304 24 Avenue. I was here last year just for the penalty. I, I am pretty sick. I have cancer, I go to chemo right now, but I can't afford to pay this. I'm just hoping for help, so...
What is the alleged violation here?
Mr. Mayor, he would have to advise me of that. I don't have that case with me. I've just got the list of the liens. What was the violation, sir? What was the problem?
Violation, what were you...
Violation of a homeless invading the lot, and I cleaned up, but I still got the ticket last year. So, I was here one time last year, and some default from this plate...
Is this your own home? Is this where you, is this where you live?
I still got the letter this time. I don't know what to do.
So, can we, we'll, we'll accord the same courtesy, if people are willing to come down to City Hall and to address us, we want to be as responsive as we can to our people here, and if, is this Jay, is this yours? Colonial Heights, sir?
24th Avenue, where?
What neighborhood, sir?
It's 3304 24 Avenue, up between Forrester and 24, on, on Forrester and Franklin.
Yeah, so, surely you have his contacting phone?
I do.
So, we will make sure we... We'll have someone from my office who'll call you tomorrow.
He did not leave a phone number, so we...
We get a phone number.
Get a phone number. So, we, we will accept, we will not impose the prescribed fee or lien on your property tonight, pending a discussion with the council member and a report back to the city council. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we need to get your information, though, and Councilmember Chenier's going to do it. Sir, come on up.
Sorry, I didn't turn one of these in at the beginning. I wasn't aware of the process.
That's okay. You, on a specific property?
Yes.
Go ahead.
3748 and 19th Ave. I don't remember the zip, but representing the lender, the lender, I can show you the public notices for mailings being sent out that were supposed to notify the owner and the lender, and they were bouncing for months on end. You know, every time they were sent out, they were bounced back to the city, and the lender only found out about this very recently and is now trying to resolve the issue, and wasn't aware that there was sort of a fairly severe problem, that the fines were even being assessed, so...
And you, what do you mean, you represent the lender?
Not the, the person that brought, bought the property with an LLC, they stopped doing certain things, and the lender...
An absentee, an absentee owner.
Right, didn't become, the person who put the money up for the loan on the property did not become aware of that, and the owner, the, the mailings to the owner and the lender, well, actually, only to the owner, were bouncing and being back to the city.
I understand. What are you asking for?
I'd like to try to get a reduction in whatever the amount is that's being assessed against it. I would have tried to come to the earlier hearings, but again...
So, I assume because it bounced that the appeal notice period, timing period, is past?
It has, but I remember this gentleman specifically. He's had an opportunity to appear in front of the, the various hearing bodies that are available for the appeal process on two occasions, so...
He says he didn't know it.
I've been appearing for the other hearings, for other fines that have already been levied.
Other properties?
Two other, no, same property, two other hearings already, but not for the hearings for this particular fine.
What are you doing to clean up this property?
They're doing a lot of work on it. They already put up a whole fence around it. We've had issues with break-ins, drywall, new plumbing, new electrical, substantial amount of work is still being done on the property, but there's also $19,000 in fines assessed against a property that was purchased for $54,000. So, you know, it kind of makes the whole process to the point where I have to contest everything at this point, because $19,000 on a $54,000 property kind of makes it almost impossible, so...
So, is it worth a, a informal resolution discussion with this gentleman and the owner to figure out how we might actually get paid what we're owed, or much of what we're owed for the past violations, and, and create a payment plan that will actually assure that they will pay?
They, they do allow a payment plan, Mr. Mayor, for payment, but that's something he would have to work out with the accounts receivable.
Have you talked to accounts receivable about a payment plan?
All I know is everyone that I've emailed over there told me to show up to this hearing. So, I was emailing back and forth, and they said, "Oh, yeah, the next hearing to show up to, to talk about anything with anyone was..."
Hey, you know what? I mean, I'm going to afford you the same courtesy. I, I think factually, your situation may be different than the first two, but a week's a week, and it's no guarantee for resolution.
Understandable.
But let's have us talk to you and look into this, and at least make sure that you have a connection with accounts receivable, so that maybe this can be resolved, so you don't have to keep coming here.
That would be preferable.
You know, as much fun as it is to come here. Okay. We have your contact information?
He also turned his slip.
Okay, just why don't you give that to the assistant clerk here, Denell, and we'll, we'll get in touch with you. So, that's three. We're keeping note of the three we're not going to pass tonight. Is there a fourth? Yes, ma'am. You didn't fill out a speaker slip either. Do you have the speaker slip for...
No, this one is for Pastor Gainsborough, who's still waiting.
Pastor Gainsborough, we'll get him in a minute, but why don't, why don't you tell us your name?
My name is Arminia Vite.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, well, after you're done, to fill out a slip so that we have that on record, okay? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I inherited a property, 4733 9th Avenue, and it's a carport that had been built for over 30 years, and 2015, the inspector came and said that we needed to tear that down, and the fees, I mean, I'm not saying that I can't pay the fees, but yesterday, when I came to make arrangements, they told me that I needed to come here so you could listen to me, because now the, from 1,300, it went to 2,600, and so, we're, I'm strapped right now, because we had squatters in there, and we had to pay fees for the squatters to get out, and so, the only thing I'm asking is, they're asking for 20%, and at this time, I cannot afford the 20%.
So, was this another payment plan discussion that should be had with the resident and accounts receivable?
It sounds like that might be the case, Mayor.
Okay, so, why don't we do the same? We'll give you the same courtesy. You came all the way down to City Hall. We'll put this over for a week, but then, we need to make sure you meet with accounts receivable, so that there can be a discussion of a payment plan, so that you can pay it off, but in a way that might be more doable for you. Is that okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Carl, you'll, you'll do this, or do we need to get involved? You got it.
Okay, we need you to fill out the slip.
Do I give a team?
Yeah. Carl is the man. Yes, sir. But wait, wait, before you do that, let's fill out the slip, so we have your information, your phone number, and...
Okay, thank you.
We'll do what we can, okay?
Get the slip.
Get the slip, right, yeah, well, the slip's in the back, I guess. Okay.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay, so, Pastor Gainsborough on this item.
Evening. Good to see you.
How are you doing, Pastor?
On top of the world. Good to see you all in good health. I've run over on my time too often, so I'm going to be really brief. I just want to, I saw the words "dangerous buildings," and I just wanted to, to bring to attention with the new captain on the ship here, that, does the word "ghost ship" still ring a bell with any of us?
Yes.
And the ghost ship...
Oakland.
Unfortunately, they hadn't been checked. It was a dangerous building. It hadn't been checked for five years. I just want to stress, just for the citizens and for you all as well, to bring up the issue that either SAC Fire, SAC Police, or somebody should be checking every building where somebody could be living, because we... could be living because we don't want a ghost ship to happen. Thirty-six beautiful lives lost could have been prevented. Keep up the good work.
No question about it. That's why we have code enforcement and building inspection about the health and safety of our residents. So, thank you for testifying. Okay. So, yes, let's take a motion, but we want to accept the four instances that we heard about tonight. Carl will sort of be the quarterback here for all these, working with the council members. Thank you very much. And accounts receivable and other city departments. And we'll proceed with the rest of the items. Okay? So, Steve, you're moving items 20 and 21?
So, I'll make two different motions. The first one is to close the public hearing on item 20 and accept the staff recommendations with the modifications that were previously mentioned.
Okay.
And there's, it sounds like Mr. Karstag, on item 20, sorry, that was 20, 21, close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation with the changes from the council.
Okay, moved and seconded. Let's call all those in favor... Yes, yes, council member. I'm sorry. Let's remember, get it.
Thank you very much. Carl, first of all, I was going to second the motion, too. Thank you for that. And thank you for all the work you've done out there. But there was a home on Ortega Way. I think that was an illegal grow a house and since then has been abandoned. Wanted to find out if you can get me an update on the status of that home in Ortega Way. I don't think anyone's still living in there in the Talek Village community. And but outside of that, I wanted to say thank you very much for all your staff's work out there focusing on a lot of those properties that have become blighted and impacting the adjacent neighbors.
Thank you very much. Moved and seconded on file item 20. Let's take that one up. First, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Nine to nothing vote. Item 21, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Item 21 passes on a nine to nothing vote. Thank you very much. That was interesting. First one of those for me, so it was interesting. Let us move now to, I think, the main item of the evening here, which is file item, one of the two main items, I should say, is file item 22, which is an update on the Sacramento Convention Center project. And we have our fine staff here. I thought I would begin, though, by making some opening comments, if that's okay. I punched myself up on the mic. To talk a little bit about what you're going to hear tonight and frankly, the importance of tonight's discussion item. And note that we are not taking any action, but let's just recount some recent history here. In the fall, the city council made a decision, I believe it was unanimous and a wise decision, to begin the retrofit reconstruction of the Sacramento Theater and to make some significant modifications and changes in Memorial Auditorium as well. The council, at my request, I was mayor-elect at the time, made a decision to hold off on a final decision on spending the estimated remainder of the transit occupancy tax debt capacity, $170 million, to say yes to the plan that was before the council in November of 2016. I made that request as mayor-elect because it is a big decision. And as the incoming mayor, I wanted at least the opportunity to be able to weigh in and potentially guide that decision. Over the last several months, council member Hanson and I, along with our lead city staff, some of you are going to hear from tonight, have led a public task force, call it a mini public ad hoc committee, to discuss what our options are in terms of how we finalize this convention center decision sooner rather than later. In the midst of it, I gave a speech at the Downtown Partnership, probably now about a month ago, where I said the following. And I don't usually use the council dais to repeat my speeches, but it's relevant to tonight's discussion. I said, "I would like us to work very hard to achieve the following. One, to achieve a quality convention center expansion project. Secondly, to try to do so by spending significantly less than the $170 million worth of debt capacity that we have available." And by the way, that number shifts a little bit based upon the current status of the interest rates, but I'm, it's $170, $175 million. And third, that if we do spend less than the $170 to $175 million on the convention center, that we use the remainder of that money to consider using as a catalyst fund for making the riverfront, for example, more publicly accessible or beginning to develop the riverfront. And in the meantime, and in the process of looking at the riverfront, to look at all of the other talked-about amenities that would make Sacramento, in addition to an expanded convention center, more of a destination city. Because I believe that there is a clear consensus in our community and in our city that while we have a tremendous amount to offer tourists, we don't have enough destination amenities in our city and in our region. I'm pleased to report tonight, and you'll hear some of it, that we are moving in that exact direction. Though we're not ready to put specific cost figures next to some of the scenarios that you will see tonight, that we are moving in the direction of a dynamic expansion of the convention center focused on its real needs, its most significant needs, and doing so at a significantly lower price. And then what I want to bring back to the council when we're ready to make the convention center decision is a plan that we've talked, this community's talked a long time about, you know, arts to zoo and A to Z. I'd like to bring back a capital plan, or at least a process to develop a capital plan, using the remainder of that transit occupancy tax debt capacity to establish a public-private partnership that will allow us to think about and to act upon with real capital the beginning of developing other destination amenities in the city of Sacramento. So, we can have it both ways, a quality expansion to meet our needs and at the same time, begin imagining, begin dreaming, and begin acting on tens of millions of dollars of opportunity to invest in the other things that are going to make Sacramento more of a destination city. So, I appreciate the opportunity to sort of set the stage and to give you at least my initial assessment of where we are in terms of progress here. I now turn it over to our assistant city manager, Fran Holbuck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, we're going to fairly quickly walk through this summary. So, as the mayor noted, the mayor and council member Hanson have convened a series of five public meetings. We have made it through three of the meetings. We have two more. And these two questions are the central questions that have been poised for us all to think about. First, what is the most effective and efficient expansion of the convention center? And on the second point, what is the highest and best use of transit occupancy tax? You'll hear that abbreviated today as an acronym of TOT, to make Sacramento a destination city. And those are the two questions that we will continue to come back to over and over again. The team is, it's really a blend of two teams. There's a city team, and within the city team, we have staff from the city manager's office, the mayor's office, convention and cultural services, the finance department, treasurer's office. Then there's a series of stakeholders, including downtown business leaders, hotel representatives, labor, downtown development, economic leaders, marketing and tourism representatives, including from the state, performing arts advocates, and then other interested parties. All these meetings are open to the general public and have been well-attended by the public. And also, we've drawn a media interest, too. So, all five of them are fully considered public meetings. The focus of the past three public meetings, we can really put these into three very succinct areas. The convention center, past occupancy and its performance, the pure performance comparisons, and then the convention center improvement concepts. So, when we came before you last October and before that, we were relying on what was called the 2012 CSNL report. That was a report that was commissioned by Visit Sacramento. A lot of the information that was in the 2012 report probably dated two years before that. So, from 2010 to 2012, that was information gathered into that report. Well, it's now 2017. So, that, so the information in that report's dated as well as we felt it was important to inform ourselves during this process about our own facility and really go deeper into how our facility is performing and operating. So, to remind you, the convention center includes 137,000, excuse me, 137,000 square feet of exhibit space. There's five halls. Halls A and B, 88,000 square feet, were built in the mid-'90s. And the other 49,000 are in smaller halls, C, D, and E. Those were built in the mid-'70s. We have 24,000 of ballroom space on the second floor, third floor, excuse me, and then 22,000 square feet of meeting rooms spread across 16 meeting rooms on the first, second, and third floor, all of varying size. So, just a little primer on convention center business because one of the things we've been having to do with the stakeholder group is educate because most people are not in the business of convention centers. So, we've had to bring everybody up to speed and just learn. And there's really two types of business. So, the Group A business is your primary focus, and that is citywide conventions. Those are booked by Visit Sacramento. That is who the city uses to market these, the Group A business. They book for the time period beyond 18 months because in this industry, people book well ahead of time. They want to lock down a facility, and they need time to do that. So, they book from 18 months beyond. These kinds of businesses, they generate travel, significant hotel demand. They bring retail use, and they bring restaurant activity. They're different from Group B business, which is booked by Matt Voyeur, who is sitting here at the side table, by the city's convention center and his staff. And they book within near term, less than 18 months. The events that they choose have secondary booking priority to the Group A business, and they generate a much more modest hotel demand. So, the Group A business is meant to bring people into our region from elsewhere, and that's what we're, that is our primary goal. So, in terms of destinations, how does somebody decide what destination they're going to choose from the myriad cities all around the country? So, for Group A events, that's what we're going to focus on. They want a hotel package, and by a hotel package, they want a certain number of rooms in a block that they can book and that they will be associated, and they'll have a block rate which is going to be sold along with the convention. So, I'm sure many of you have gone to conventions, and within the convention, there are certain hotels usually right where the convention is or very close. Those are the kind of hotel packages we're talking about. The convention facilities, the exhibit halls, the meeting rooms, the general sessions, the ballrooms, they have to be the right size, or they're not going to choose your facility. Once you pass that line, if you've been able to get the hotel package and the convention facilities you're looking for, you look at the destination. Is that an area that people will want to come to, that they would spend money to come to your convention because they want to come to this destination? Is the transportation good? Can you get into the airport easily? Can you get from the airport to the area you're coming to? Can people move around in that area? And then what's the safety and security like? Those are the factors that destination planners look for. So, just to underscore that, desirability of the destination is key. We go back to what the mayor talked about, that, you know, making Sacramento a destination in all different ways is really the foundation. For Sacramento, that's really about place and now, and food, and especially the farm-to-fork movement that we have created here. That is something that we're becoming known for and is becoming a key destination factor for Sacramento.
And to create.
So, this one's a little bit interesting, and I wanted to just kind of walk you through some of the things that we've been, we as a group of this city team and the stakeholder group have been talking about. This is a sample, one of the defining questions we've looked at. So, what is the relationship between expanding exhibit halls and hotel rooms? Do you need more hotel rooms if you expand exhibit halls? If you do, how many and where? If we have more blank, whether it's exhibit halls, meeting rooms, ballroom space, will we get more hotel rooms? So, we need to test those ideas. How many more hotel rooms do we need just to keep the status quo, which means to book the business that we currently are booking? How many more hotel rooms do we need? Because there's some thought that we are, that that could be a limiting factor, and it may be a limiting factor for us already. So, what would it take to get to 65% capacity? And this number, 65% capacity in the industry is, it's a goal for what, if you are booked at 65% capacity, you're probably at full capacity because you can't get booked 100% of the time because you've got to be down to do some maintenance. You need to do various different in-and-out movements, et cetera. So, 65% is the target that we would be shooting at, and that's for your group, and we're looking at the Group A business. So, this little diagram that's, you know, this, the circle that you're seeing on the side, you see that, you know, we've got, we've got Group A business, we're driving what they call heads-on beds, or hotel rooms, which is resulting in higher transit occupancy tax and then higher bonding capacity. So, this, this is a sample of the kinds of data that we are drilling down as a group and really looking at. And what this one shows us, this is in national, this shows us what the nation's doing. So, what is a trend in national convention centers? So, the two lines that are at the top, those exhibit, those basically show growth. So, exhibit space in convention centers around the country have grown 50% since 2000. So, in the last 16, 17 years, we've had a huge growth in exhibit space. If you look at the line at the bottom, that's actually your attendance. It's not exactly flat, but it's, you know, it's not growing. It's kind of level. Goes up and down a little bit each year, but it's kind of level.
May I interrupt there just to put a finer point on this? Because in our hours of public meetings, this might have been, at least for me, one of the most significant slides and pieces of data because we all agree, by the way, everyone sitting around that table, that we need an expansion of our convention center. What we're debating is amounts of exhibit space, amount of meeting space, amount of ballroom space. And this piece of data is a bit sobering because it says around the country that there have been fairly large growth expansions in physical space, but the demand for convention center business has not kept up with that. So, once again, it tells us that we need to be very strategic about how we expand and specifically what we expand. And I hope you'll get to these, the differentiations between exhibit space, meeting space, and ballroom space in the rest of your presentation.
This actually was, as the mayor said, a pretty much an aha moment for a lot of people because it's not just Sacramento. Convention centers all around the country are expanding. Convention centers all around the country are expanding. They're needing to keep up with the competition. So people are growing, but for whatever reason, attendance is, you know, dipping up and down, but it's just not growing in the same way. And so we need to ask ourselves why that is, and how, if Sacramento is different or the same. Then we turn to ourself after we looked at the nation, and we have gathered, and I'm just bringing, I'm going to bring you two graphs to just talk about the type of information we're looking at. So we actually looked at how our center has performed historically, and we gathered information over the last eight years. And I will say that we've, we've had some changes in systems, so we couldn't go all the way back to 2000 and get the same type of data. So this data from 2008 is telling us what we see, the, again, we went with events are the bars, and attendance is the line, the kind of goldish color line. So again, you see that the line's not exactly level, but it's, you know, fairly flat, that we're not growing. With some years, we're up a little, some years, you're down a little, but we, since roughly 2010, we're not growing a whole lot in terms of the total attendance. And then this is another way that we've displayed data. Similarly, there's a dash line across the top that's right around 52%. That's the industry average on how much exhibit halls are being occupied. So when you take our bars, you know, we're pretty close to that industry average, but we're not exceeding it, and we need to question and ask ourselves, okay, so can we do better? Can we, can we fill that exhibit hall more? Even the exhibit halls that we have today. So these are just samples of all types of data that we are now really digging into about our own, our own performance. So these are key questions that we have begun to ask ourselves. Again, we're only through three of five meetings, and so we have not answered these questions yet, and hopefully by the time we're able to come back in April, that we will have answers as best as we can to these questions, because some of them are probably not completely answerable, but we'll do our best. So, the main question is, why isn't there higher occupancy of the convention center? And there's several theories that we need to look into. One of the leading ones is that we have a lack of dedicated hotel space. I mean, as you know, that there are a few hotels right around the convention center. We've got the Hyatt, we've got the Sheraton, we've got the Marriott Residence. The Citizen is not too far away. There are several other hotels that also will offer smaller blocks of rooms. Many, many of the larger conventions, they would prefer to just have one or two hotels. They don't want to, they don't want to have their people have to go to three, four, or five different hotels, seven different hotels, all coming to the same convention. So it's a possibility that, because we have a lack of dedicated hotel rooms that can be given to us in a block immediately adjacent to the convention center, that could be one of the problems. Is Sacramento suffering a lot, is Sacramento and the industry, and/or the industry, having a lack of market demand for conventions? Is it the deficiencies of our facility? We have what's called limited ability to stack events, and so another learning that we had, I'm going to tell you what stacking events means, because when I first heard it, I assumed it meant doing two events at the same time, and it was, it was close but not quite right. So in the industry, let's say you have a typical four-day event. Well, four-day events, a convention is, they move in on a Monday. They're getting everything set up in the trade show. The actual convention happens on Tuesday and Wednesday. And then on Thursday, they move everything out. So it's a four-day event, but it's really, it's two days of actual event, but they use a facility for four days. So to stack an event, we would then try to get somebody else to come in. They move in on Tuesday, their event is Wednesday and Thursday, and they move out on Friday. So we have one event on Tuesday and Wednesday that's going, and one that's going on Wednesday and Thursday. So the hotels end up having people back-to-back. They don't see, oh, people for two days, and then they don't have anybody for the rest of the week. So we try to get people in the hotels for those two days, and then the following two days, we have other people in the hotels.
May I, again, just put a fine point on one of these issues, because I think it's educative, as they say, important. And that is, everybody agrees that one of the problems we have, we have some significant space issues, we have logistics issues, the layout of the expanded convention center, loading and docking, loading problems, docking problems, et cetera. But the real chicken-and-egg issue is this lack of dedicated hotel space. Because what comes first? You build an expanded center, you hope that that will lead to more hotels, or do you find a way to build more hotels, in which case it'll be easier then to book a larger convention? So here's one tentative conclusion I've come to, as the mayor, one vote here, and that is, whatever expansion proposal we look at, it will be a much more attractive proposal if it is coupled with the development of a new large hotel. That's what we ought to be striving for here.
At least.
Well, at least one to begin, exactly, but at least one big hotel. And I'm not sure that that was part of the November proposal.
So to underscore that, as I mentioned earlier, the very first factor that destination planners look for in terms of these conventions is they need dedicated hotel rooms, and that is their first factor that they look for. So the last two on this list were, it's, is our marketing that we're using, is it sufficient? And is Sacramento an attractive, an attractive enough destination? So I don't think we're going to find that it's one of these. I think we're going to find that all six of these have some factor in terms of what's going on here in Sacramento, but we are still continuing to sort through this. So we're going to look just quickly a little bit about peer performance, competitors, and trends. So our direct peer competitors that we've pulled out are Spokane, Portland, Reno Sparks, San Jose, Long Beach. That's not to say that we are exactly like any of them, but what we're doing is looking at these five cities in a little deeper way, seeing what, comparing their facilities with ours, comparing their performance, if we can, with ours, how many hotel rooms they have adjacent, within a half a mile or mile compared to what we have, and really trying to figure out what we can learn from these peer cities. We also looked at what we're calling three aspirational cities, and those are Denver, Nashville, and Austin. And those are selected because they have made some significant, have made or are making some significant improvements, and they, they have a lot going on in those cities. And so we really want to look at how, how they've expanded, how their business has responded to their expansions, when they may be expanding again, and kind of what their story is, what So I'm going to talk just a little bit now about our convention center, because that's kind of what our, our stakeholders wanted to do. As we've kind of talked a lot about use and data, they wanted to get to, what are some of the options? So I'm just going to remind you a little bit about this facility. So what you're seeing is on the first floor, those are the exhibit halls shown in that sort of yellow-greenish color. They take up most of that first floor. And then as you go up, you'll see that the ballroom is, it's a large, kind of, for you, it's going to look sort of magenta-pinkish, large rectangle on the upper, the upper floor, surrounded by the green meeting rooms that are on the perimeters of the buildings, and then the meeting rooms are also on the edge of the second floor, excuse me, on the edge of the first floor. So that's just a reminder, and in the lower-left corner, has the same square footage that I told you before. So, I did not include the one with the deficiencies, Mr. Mayor, because the, the page with the deficiencies got pretty complicated, so we did not include that in a slide in here. But what we can tell you is, the, to list again the deficiencies we have, we have a lot, we have quite a few deficiencies, and they're on all floors. So on the first floor, the, the older exhibit halls are not directly connected to the loading dock. So that's a problem trying to get vehicles and equipment into those. They also are of a lower ceiling height, and they are, they're also all concrete floor. They're not carpeted. So if somebody wanted to use it for what's called a general session, a ballroom, they'd have to rent carpet in order to make it, the sound attenuate, and also make it be a more attractive place. We have meeting rooms on the first floor that are really tiny, and then on the second floor, they're a little larger, but still, they're smaller than the norm, and the ones on the third floor are the correct size. Most people are taking our 24,000 square foot ballroom on the third floor, which can house all these walls, and they're dividing it into meeting space, so they can do eight or 10 meeting rooms. So our ballroom is essentially used most of the time as meeting room. And as we have been, another aha moment for me was our, one of our consultants looked at five of our kind of premium convention center users, and how they're actually using the building when they, when they go in there. We don't tell them how to set up, they do it themselves. Thank you. We do it, they do it themselves. And so what, what he laid out showed us that the exhibit halls, the two larger exhibit halls are being used as exhibit halls. The meeting rooms on the third floor and the ballroom on the third floor are being used as meeting rooms. So they're using the smaller exhibit halls, turning that into a ballroom, because it's, they don't have enough meeting space, and also because our ballroom is too small for their needs. And so they're, they're using it not the way it was designed, but it's certainly a way that it can be used, but not as expected. So when we talk about stacking events, and having two side-by-side, not, maybe not necessarily on the same days, but sometimes overlapping, you want a separate lobby, because you want those people to be able to not, you know, if you come into one convention and somebody else is coming into another convention, you don't want to be crossing and trying to figure out which way you're supposed to go. So you want to have separate lobbies, you want to have your own exhibit halls, you want to have your own meeting rooms. So we presented some options for dealing with deficiencies we have. Option one was largely a renovate option, so it doesn't really, you know, doesn't fix all the deficiencies, but it renovates what it can do. It doesn't add space, a whole lot of space. You could, you could actually add in some exhibited and meeting space. It doesn't have to, but we've, we presented it in kind of a way that you could just renovate, or you could renovate into some meeting rooms, or you could, you know, expand exhibit space if you want to, but it largely focused on renovation. I'm going to jump to option three and then come back to option two. So option three was a two-part project that we brought to you in October, and at the time, we told you that that two-part project was 270 million, and we recommend, and we brought to you, recommended it would be done in two phases. One phase was 170, the extra phase was around 100 million. That phase, phase one, focused on the west side of the building, really didn't do anything for the east side of the building. Phase two, if you could get to phase two, would have then addressed the east side of the building. So there was a problem with that one in that you had to get more hotel growth, because we would have used up the funds available in phase one, and you would need more additional hotels, and you would need new TOT to someday be able to afford your second phase. So what we've now started looking at is an option two. It's an idea, it has parts that most people agree on, but then it has some parts we haven't, we haven't worked out yet.
Explain how it would differ from option three.
So how, so how it differs is...
It's the November alternative.
Yes, and again, the, the one last year was two phases, 270, to address the deficiencies. This one, we believe we could actually still demolish the, the west side of the building, but we build it back in a different way than we proposed to you before. So we would, we would bring back exhibit space, meeting room, and ballroom space, but we don't think we need as much of all of those. We're still figuring out how much exhibit space is really needed to do two, two of these conventions side-by-side. That's something we are still drilling down. It improves the connectivity, it gets all the exhibit halls connected to loading dock, it improves the food service, and this time, instead of putting in, what we talked about before was in a second phase, we were going to build between the theater and the convention center. That's where your exhibit space was going to grow into. That's how we were going to grow exhibit space, is we were going to build something that all, you know, kind of filled in that whole space between the theater and the convention center. And we believe that we don't need as much exhibit space, and that we can actually make a plaza that can be used for a lot of different things, because it's in between the theater and the convention center. It could be used by the theater, it'd be a nice open-air performance.
Outdoor plaza with all kinds of outdoor activities.
It can also be used for exhibit space, because some of the, a few of the conventions that come could take advantage of, you know, a tent-type exhibit, the exhibit area. It could be, you know, be programmed for, it'd be nice to do for receptions, might have weddings, you know, all, just outdoor things that Sacramento is the perfect environment for. So it looks like we could actually come up with a second option that will address all the deficiencies for quite a bit less money than the two-phase project that we brought to you last October. But as I said, we are still working out the, the details of how much meeting space, how much ballroom, and especially how much exhibit hall space.
Remember, if I may, one of the advantages to coupling, for example, Exhibit Two with a brand-new hotel, is that a new hotel itself would come with additional meeting space, because that's how a lot of the successful convention centers work. The hotel itself adds to the, adds to the space.
And I'm just, I've touched on most of these, but I just want to go back to our, the thoughts, the preliminary thoughts of the group so far is that, yes, we want to be able to stack events, and a second entrance on the east side would help. We need more, and we need better, meeting, meeting room space. Now, and we need our ballroom to be, rather than having separate exhibit halls and separate ballrooms, we're talking about, in the industry, they call what's, they use what's called flex space. So it can flexibly become either exhibit hall, or it can become, it can become ballroom, and it also can become meeting space. So rather than saying, we need this one or that one, we need to do a space that can be all those things. We need some other updated amenities, and then we need more research on exhibit hall space. Just touch on financing, the original total project estimate was 270 million. And back in October, 100 million of that was approved for the Community Center Theater and the Memorial Auditorium, with the remainder available at that time for the convention center. But what we're looking at now is continuing to develop the financing for the project, which would consider hotels and potential other amenities destinations, as the mayor has laid out. And we don't have specifics on that financing now, and we will be planning to bring that back. So the mayor started this out by saying, he laid out a, he laid out kind of a plan, and he said, we're going to work hard. We set up five meetings, one every two weeks, with the understanding that we were going to try to hit that April date to get back here. And we have a lot of team members in the audience, both from the city as well as our consultants, if you have questions, but I can attest that we have worked hard.
Yes.
This has been a, it has been quite an effort to work through as much material as we have, and we are hopeful that we can come back to you in April with a good plan.
Well, thank you very much, Fran, and Matt, and your entire team, and I see Xavier Macio and other stakeholders representing some of the different players here, and I would completely go, I want to thank my staff, especially Mike McKiever and Crystal Straight for your very, very hard work on this as well. We have used these sessions to try to get to the facts, in an area, frankly, where there are, yes, a lot of facts, but there are a lot of unanswerable questions as well. There's no data that proves a causation between increased exhibit space and more hotels. There's no data that says you grow exhibit space, you don't get more hotels. And so what we've really done is take a step back and ask, what are the real needs here? There's a need for more meeting space, there's a need for... There's a need for more meeting space, there's a need for flexible ballroom space, and there may be a need for more exhibit space, but there is a need first and foremost for more hotels. And what is going to drive more hotel development? The project itself should by definition create at least an additional hotel by virtue of a partnership. And then I want to repeat what I said a minute ago because I think it is important. Our goal here ought to be to reserve a healthy amount of the transit occupancy tax, the hotel tax, X million. And say that X million ought to be matched with equal investment from the private sector and combine those millions of dollars ought to be framed, if you will, and put out as a capital fund for arts, culture and destination, Sacramento. And then we ought to have a community and a council discussion about how we take that investment and look at the variety of things that people have talked about. Whether it's riverfront, which you know is a favorite of mine, whether it's public market à la Seattle, whether it's the I Street pedestrian bridge, whether it is a whole host of things that have been written about. I know I get in trouble every time I use any examples because then seems to exclude others or whatever, and I'm not the expert here. Our goal though ought to be to create that kind of capital fund by being strategic about how we expand this convention center, then take the next step. And everyone asks, what's the next thing after the arena? What's the next thing after the arena? Well, we, with our community, have the opportunity to decide that and achieve it, especially if we're smart about how we do this project. And the timeline is aggressive because we were warned appropriately about interest rates and fluctuations, God knows what's, you know, happening with the national economy at this point, but we do want to be back in April with the expectation of a final decision or the conventions that are in the beginnings of this fund that I described over the last few minutes. So it's pretty exciting, even if it's thick in terms of its information and data, and I hope tonight is useful for the members and members of the public. Let me hear from my vice chair, co-chair, colleague, partner on this thing, Steve Hanson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to echo the mayor's comments. I think that the process and particularly, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, your chief of staff and your team for really weighing in with a lot of resources on this, but also Mr. City Manager Fran and the whole city staff and our platoon of consultants who have helped inform us have really made a big difference. I think that this is in a better place from where we were before, where we know more precisely what we need, we are able to figure out what we want. And I would just echo a few of your comments, Mr. Mayor. I've come to call option two the Goldilocks option and I know that we're not picking an option tonight, we're not making a decision, but I think that what was left out of the presentation was the idea that it better utilizes the site, allows us to stack, it remedies some design problems that were done in 1996 with that expansion by, by rectifying the building so it can be used more. Think about a highway where you can only use two of the four lanes at any given time. By fixing it, it allows all the lanes to be used at the same time. But also, you hit the nail on the head with hotels. We want people to come to our region from other places, spend their money, as much of it as they will, and then go home, tell people what a great time they had and send other people here to spend their money. That is how you grow an economy and I think that the hotels, because the quality of jobs, especially full-service hotels, which I think are, have proven their economic value, that's not to say other hotels aren't as valuable, but for creating jobs and paths to opportunity, those quality opportunities to lift you and your family up through the hotels that we have, it's been an important career path through people that otherwise might not have it. And then on the cultural bucket, I think that, that's probably not what you're going to call it, a cultural bucket?
I don't know.
You had to place your name. The civic amenities fund, the, the, the...
The Destination Sacramento Fund, now let's...
On Destination Sacramento?
Yes.
There are so many opportunities that we have to continue the forward progress that our cities had over a decade. Clara, B Street, Waterfront, Crocker, but there's so much more too. That's the powerhouse, it's the zoo, and I think you're right, we don't know exactly which projects those are, but we know that there's a pent-up demand in the community to accelerate our civic investments so that we can better represent Sacramento's potential to visitors. And I was explaining to some realtors this morning, because I had to, I had a warm-up presentation about convention center and other stuff. There's this word in English, lacuna, it means the hidden place between two other points. And for a long time Sacramento was that place where we weren't a place to stop, we're a place to go through, but it was hidden to most people. What I love about our city, our indomitable city, and I've got it actually stitched in my collar with 1849 to celebrate our city's founding, is that Sacramento is no longer a hidden place. We have uncovered our bushel basket, to be proverbial about it, and we are letting our light shine through our innovation economy, through our arts community, through our food economy, through our diverse communities. Sacramento is a pillar of so much. In fact, Mr. Mayor, I just found out that an international magazine called Monocle is going to feature Sacramento in its May edition. And Monocle is to a foodie traveler, design, fashion, international affairs person, the penultimate. And it was Benjamin of Benjamin Shoes at the Warehouse Artist Lofts that wrote to the editor and said, you got to see what's going on in Sacramento.
Oh, I'll make myself available for an interview.
But, but, but I have to say that, they didn't call him apparently. But I have to say that we have so much good and so much to build on throughout the whole city. This is just another example of how we, we can maximize our potential. And I, I, Mr. Mayor, just think, this is a great time to be part of the council, it's a great time to be part of our city and I want to thank the community who's really invested themselves in this because in the end, this is a generational decision that when we get it right, we'll pay it forward for people who need economic opportunity, who want to be part of a great city and who know that we're more than just the place in between, we are the place to be.
Love it. Very well said, thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Steve that Sacramento is being discovered and this is a wonderful place. It's, it's actually a pretty remarkable city as I travel around the country and compare it, I'm always eager to get back home to Sacramento because there is a lot here and a lot that I embrace. This is a question for Fran and actually for the mayor as well. So last fall, integral to the project was the renovation of the community center theater and tied to the memorial auditorium. So I understand completely that hotels bring TOT that drive the project, you know, none of this project can happen without substantial TOT. But where in this, what happened to, to the theaters? Why are they not part of this conversation as well? Because the renovation of the convention center was actually at one point pretty well tied to the community center theater.
So back in October, we brought you three projects and the council approved two of them. So you approved the theater and the community center theater project, so they are both under design. You've since, since then, you've actually approved the consultant agreement, so they have kicked off the projects, they have reconstituted their stakeholder groups and are working, are going to be working through the design process with the stakeholder groups. And so the timing of course is that we're going to, we're working to get the memorial auditorium done first because that is the alternate venue for when we need to, we need to work on the interior of the theater.
Sure, so those ideas are still in play, but how are those being financed then if not through TOT?
You, you actually in October approved up to 100 million of the TOT for that project. Well, it's not exactly 100 million because we had some other funding in there, but you, you already approved.
Yeah. So the design is underway currently?
Design is underway.
And when will that come back to council?
Um, thinking it's fall for, thank you. Yeah, so we, as I mentioned, that we're, we've got the memorial a little bit ahead of the convention center because it needs to go first, so we're looking at summer to bring the item back on the memorial and then in the fall for the theater.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, not, not forgotten, it's just that decision was made by the previous council. I support that decision, I think it was a very good decision, but it left the convention center question and the 170 million dollars and that's what we're discussing tonight. But obviously, it's all integrated in an appropriate way. Did you have a question for me too?
No.
Okay, okay, same question. Very good. There's no public testimony, no other council members up. Thank you very much for a very thorough report and expect us to come back within, I don't know, six, seven weeks, maybe sooner, probably six, seven weeks for a big decision. Very good. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Okay, our next discussion calendar item is the city auditor's audit of the fire department overtime use.
Very good. Who is presenting here? This is our, our auditor. Murder, Osaguda. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to just use the restroom quick.
Here, Rick.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Jennings and members of the city council. Jorge Osaguda, your city auditor. With me tonight is Lynn Bashaw, who was primarily responsible for completing this audit. The city auditor's office conducts its work in accordance with government auditing standards as promulgated by the United States Government Accountability Office. These standards require that we perform our work with competence, integrity, objectivity and independence. My office, my office often tackles difficult subjects that inevitably put us in a position to disclose information that may be considered controversial. Despite the potential for controversy and criticism, I would like to assure the council that regardless of the subject that we are auditing, my office will always approach our audits with integrity, impartiality and professionalism. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving an audit of the fire department's overtime use. To provide some background information and context, this figure shows the dollar amount spent per fiscal year for the fire department's regular hours, overtime and FLSA premium hours. The green bars in the figure show the amount of overtime reimbursed to the city by other agencies through various mutual aid agreements. This figure does not include other types of pay such as employee sick time, vacation leave, health benefits or retirement benefits. Also, as will be described later in this presentation, much of the noted overtime levels can be attributed to understaffing. As a result, it is likely that as additional firefighters are hired, overtime levels will decrease and regular hours will increase. The objective of this audit of the fire department overtime use was to assess the fire department's administration and use of overtime and to identify areas of risk and opportunities for potential savings. In an effort to provide the fire department and the council with a well-informed and balanced report, we worked closely with the fire department throughout this project. As evidence of this collaborative effort, the fire department is in agreement with the report's findings and recommendations and has already started working towards implementing some of the recommendations. This report contains four findings. The first finding focuses on the fire department's reliance on increasing levels of overtime to meet its operational needs. Specifically, we found the fire department has not hired enough employees to fill approved suppression positions, that they could have saved approximately $280,000 in labor costs by hiring additional employees, they consistently relied on overtime to cover vacant shifts and they do not have formal process in place to ensure employees receive adequate rest between breaks. This figure shows the number of approved suppression positions compared to the number of actual staffing levels. As the figure demonstrates, the fire department suppression units have not been fully staffed to their approved staffing levels over the last six years. In order to meet the demands of the department's constant staffing model, existing employees are brought in on overtime to fill the shifts that would have been covered by employees in these vacant positions. Our department suppression employees generally volunteer for overtime shifts, but they can also be subject to mandatory overtime when there are not enough employees signed up for voluntary overtime. However, it should be noted that mandatory overtime only accounts for approximately 6% of the total amount of overtime awarded. As shown in this table, the ongoing staffing shortage has provided opportunities for the fire department's existing employees to work substantial amounts of overtime with no limit on the number of hours that employee can work. The blue areas in this figure show regular pay while the red areas show compensation related to overtime pay. As shown in this figure, some employees were able to more than double their income as a result of the availability of overtime hours. Ten fire department employees were able to accumulate so much overtime pay that they earned more than the fire chief. In our opinion, allowing this amount of overtime could result in undesirable consequences as discussed in the next slide. Maximum work periods are established to help ensure the health and safety of employees who work long hours. The fire department's labor agreement states that employees may work up to a maximum of 72 hours without a break in service. However, during our review, we found that employees routinely exceed a 72-hour work period without a break in service, with some employees working six days in a row without a break in their shifts. Working long hours without a break could potentially lead to health issues. We noted an increase in the amount of injury on duty time used by the fire department personnel over the last few years and which could indicate that long hours are having an adverse effect on employee health. We recommended that the fire department more aggressively pursue hiring employees to fill approved positions and develop controls to ensure compliance with the 72-hour maximum work period outlined in the labor agreement. Fire department, the fire department is in agreement with these recommendations and has already made great strides in addressing some of these issues. As a result of their efforts, the fire academy graduated nearly 40 students in November of 2016. This is significantly higher than the number of individuals hired in prior academies. Continuing to, continuing to address recruitment issues and bringing the department more in line with the adopted and approved staffing levels should significantly reduce the department's need for overtime in the future. Our second finding focuses on negotiated overtime and incentive provisions that may have unintentionally increased payroll costs. During our review, we found that some of the provisions negotiating in the labor agreement had adverse or unanticipated effects on the department's overtime costs that could potentially be candidates for modification or renegotiation during the next round of labor negotiations. Specifically, we found that the rank-for-rank requirement may have added approximately $150,000 in payroll costs, that bringing some of the negotiated overtime provisions in line with minimum FLSA requirements could save approximately $385,000 annually. Incentives are paid to employees who do not work the shift the incentive was designed for and that over $30,000 was paid to employees for an incentive that was not included in their labor agreement. This figure is used to illustrate an example of the various, of the different methodologies between filling a vacant captain position and using rank-for-rank versus out-of-class. We estimate that on average, it was nearly $10 an hour more expensive to implement the rank-for-rank staffing option. Based on the number of overtime hours worked by captains, engineers and battalion chiefs in 2015, we estimate that the department could have saved over $850,000 in labor costs by using out-of-class instead of rank-for-rank. In finding two, we made four recommendations related to... In finding two, we made four recommendations related to reexamining labor provisions that influence the fire department's payroll and overtime costs. The fire department is in agreement with these recommendations and is committed to approach these issues during the next round of negotiations. Our third finding focuses on the lack of sufficient controls over the administration and use of overtime. Insufficient controls could potentially lead to fraud, waste, or abuse. Our review of the administration of overtime found that policies have not been formally documented, accountability for overtime has not been established, and several employees can enter their own overtime hours without supervisory approval. The lack of sufficient internal controls over the administration and use of the fire department's overtime, including inadequate documentation to support overtime entries, made it difficult to decipher if the entries were legitimate. We should note that although the risk of fraud, waste, and abuse is elevated due to insufficient controls, we did not identify examples of fraud, waste, or abuse during our audit. We developed eight recommendations aimed at improving the administration use of overtime, including developing formal overtime use and system access policies and requiring supervisory approval of overtime use. The fire department is in agreement with these recommendations and has already taken steps towards implementing some of them. For example, according to the fire department, they have already reviewed and made changes to reduce access to the timekeeping system and has had the most recent roll call manual reviewed by both the attorney's office and the labor relations division to ensure compliance with labor agreements. Our last finding covers alternative staffing methods that could reduce costs and improve service delivery. Based on the information we reviewed, some staffing options the fire department could consider incorporating into their existing Model R: staffing ambulances with more cost-effective single-role employees, reducing staffing from four to three on select engines, and initiating an ambulance shift that operates during peak call times. This figure shows the fire department's dispatch data from 2013 to 2015. As shown in this figure, the fire department responds to over 45,000 medical calls per year. In comparison, the fire department responds to an average of 2,400 fire-related calls per year. As the city's demand for medical services continues to dominate the fire department's workload, the fire department may want to consider methods for reducing costs of providing these services. One staffing option that could significantly reduce costs of providing medical services is incorporation of non-firefighters on the ambulance units. These employees would be more medic, would be medically qualified paramedics and EMTs, but be considered single-role personnel because they are not trained in firefighting techniques. Non-firefire paramedics and EMTs can be significantly less costly per hour than firefight paramedics or firefighter EMTs. Staffing ambulances with medically qualified but non-firefire paramedics and EMTs would still provide a similar level of advanced life support to that currently being offered on the ambulances, but at a lower cost. In this figure are some examples of staffing models the department could consider incorporating in their existing model and the estimated cost savings associated with each. As overtime costs are based on the hourly rate of employees working overtime, incorporating more cost-effective employees into the staffing model should in turn lower overtime costs. A study completed in 2010 by consultant management partners for the city of Sacramento found that while four-person engine companies are typical for high-density urban communities, much of the Sacramento service area is suburban in nature. They noted that engine companies in suburban California fire departments are generally staffed with three-person crews. The report goes on to state that higher staffing levels are by far the most beneficial in downtown areas with multi-story buildings and higher-risk occupancies. There is much less benefit to staffing above a three-person level when dealing with single-story occupancies associated with suburban areas. The Sacramento Fire Department has historically staffed almost all engines and trucks with four-person companies. However, not all parts of the city are the same, and call volume data indicates that not all areas of the city experience the same demand for service. Instead of using a one-size-fits-all approach to staffing the department's 24 engines, the fire department could reduce staffing in areas that are suburban in nature and that have historically experienced lower demand for service. However, it is important to note that factors other than call volume should be considered when determining minimum staffing levels, including the location of the engine company in relationship to the city's urban core, proximity to other fire department resources, and employee safety. While some of the city's engines are much busier than others, a recent standards response cover review completed for the fire department by consultant Citygate and Associates in 2016 found that none of the department's engine companies exceed the maximum recommended unit-hour utilization of 30%. In fact, none of the engine companies exceeded even the 15% overall unit-hour utilization. As the figure demonstrates, the city's engine companies experience varying levels of call volume, and the majority of calls are medical in nature. Three-person staffing has already been implemented in surrounding fire districts, including Sacramento Metro Fire, Roseville, Folsom, and West Sacramento. In addition, the Sacramento Fire Department has already established a practice of operating with three-person crews when they are unable to fill vacant shifts due to staffing shortages. Based on the department's 2015 records, there were approximately 90 instances between August 1st and October 31st of engines or trucks operating with three-person crews for at least 12 hours out of a 24-hour shift. As the fire department currently operates several shifts per day on overtime, we estimate that shifting eight of the department's 24 engines to three-person staffing in select engines would reduce the fire department's labor costs by approximately $3 million per year. The cost savings associated with this change could then be reallocated to higher-demand areas such as ambulance services, which we will discuss in the next slide. The fire department's ambulances are currently staffed 24 hours a day on the same schedule as fire suppression units. Employees generally start their shifts at 8:00 AM and end their shifts at 48 hours later. We reviewed the department's dispatch data as the figure shows and noted a significant trend in the number of calls based on the time of day. This figure shows the number of calls received in the calendar year 2015 that are either medical or fire-related by hour of the day. Based on the dispatch information, the number of calls for medical service appears to increase significantly during the day and decrease during the evening hours. A recent standards of cover analysis completed by Citygate and Associates concluded that many of the fire department's ambulance units were operating well above the 30% unit-hour utilization and recommended bringing three additional units online. However, the Citygate report does not provide cost estimates or outline a strategy on how to pay for these additional units. We propose that the fire department consider using the cost savings associated with alternative staffing models to bring online additional ambulance units that operate only during peak times of the day, thereby improving service delivery when it is needed most and potentially providing some relief to the employees working on the existing ambulance units. We estimate with the cost of bringing two additional ambulance units online with non-firefire paramedics, that this would cost just over $1.4 million in the first year, including approximately $1 million in labor costs and approximately $400,000 in one-time costs to purchase and equip new ambulances. In our opinion, reevaluating the department's overall staffing model to be more responsive when the demand is greatest and incorporating more cost-effective employees could lower overtime costs while also improving service delivery. Finding four contained four recommendations for the fire department to consider alternative staffing models. The fire department is in agreement with the recommendation to consider alternative staffing models, and in keeping with their commitment to continuous improvement, also welcome an audit of the EMS division. We would like to take this opportunity to thank the fire department for working so closely with us on this engagement. Their willingness to collaborate and provide feedback during all stages of the audit process helped us to provide balance and make this a more fully informed report. We would also like to thank the finance department, the human resources department, and the city attorney's office for their time and assistance during this engagement. That concludes our presentation, and we're available to answer any questions, should you have any.
Very good. Let me begin by thanking you, Mr. Osagueda, and Ms. Bashaw, the assistant city auditor, both for your hard work and a very thorough job on a complicated set of issues. And I know that there are stakeholders and members of the council and members of the public that may agree or disagree, and members of the fire service that may agree or disagree with any of the specific recommendations within, and that's fine. But the one recommendation that really strikes me, that I don't think we should lose sight of here in terms of the overall big picture, we recognize through the standards of coverage report, which was produced before I came to City Hall, that there are some significant needs within our fire department, that the city is growing, that there are questions about response times, that there is a need to build new fire stations. The question that you raise in your report, that I think is very valuable and helpful, is how do we pay for those expansions and those advances? Because I keep pointing to our finance director, Ms. Milstein there, sitting innocently in the third row, who tells us that, you know, in five years, we're facing a $29 million a year additional hit with PERS. We know we have a significant recruitment and retention problem in our police department. We know we have a very strong desire to invest in our neighborhoods and specifically in our youth, and a lot of needs here. And the roadmap, potential roadmap you point out, again, some of the specifics are subject to collective bargaining and to reasonable disagreements about means to the ends. But I know as one member here, I certainly want to see any expansion of service in the first resort, in the first instance, paid for through efficiencies. Because that's the only way I can see, at this point, affording those advances that the fire service and the fire department needs. So you've laid out a number of different recommendations, and you didn't really get into in this audit, but I know one of your recommendations is to call for a new audit on the EMS service itself about this whole issue of revenue generation and revenue collection. Because in fairness, that's another side of the equation that we can probably improve upon as a way to increase our necessary resources to do the jobs. I just, you know, there's single-role, controversial, three-person engine, these issues, you know, we've talked a lot about them and are going to continue to, and they may be the subject of collective bargaining. But your main principle, that the advances ought to be paid for through efficiencies, I believe, as the mayor, is a very sound one. So I want to thank you. Let's, and I ask this at the budget committee, what does it mean to accept the audit?
So at this point, with the full council's adoption of the audit, you would be directing the city manager and thereby the fire department to go forth and implement the recommendations that are included in this report. And then, as, assuming that that then is adopted, every six months, we would come back to the city council and report on the progress that the department has made in moving towards implementing those recommendations.
But in fairness, when you say implement, a lot of these are sort of a menu of ideas, especially when you talk about the staffing issues. You recognize it's a collective bargaining issue. It's a menu of ideas to potentially save money, correct?
Correct.
So when you talk about implementation, it means to strongly consider and, and work towards it, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's all that means.
All right. Are there members of the public who want to testify on this item?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
We have Chris Andrew.
We got the chief, wait, we have the chief first. I think the chief himself may want to make, I'm sorry, chief, of course, the fire chief in the house.
Mayor and council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I also appreciate the opportunity to work with our auditor, Mr. Osagueda and Lynn Bashaw. When it comes to the fire department overtime, it was primarily two factors that drove that, and one was being understaffed, and the other was a very active wildland season, one in which we sent several of our members out of county. In fact, up to 100 firefighters were sent to 25 separate out-of-county incidents, and all of that overtime was reimbursed to us by the state of California. When it comes to the audit findings of the 18, there are 12 that lie within management's rights, and we are working on them, and some of those we've already made, as the auditor had mentioned, significant progress or completed. There's another six that do squarely fall within bargaining, and the opportunity for change lies ahead in future negotiations, and I can't really make a pre-commitment to change at this time. But we're going to consider all the recommendations. I also appreciate the fact that our auditor mentioned that there was no fraud determined in this audit, and that wasn't in dispute, but we recognize there is opportunity for us to tighten controls to reduce any potential likelihood. Of the recommendations that were made, some of the ones that I'm proud to say that we made progress on is our hiring. We've hired over 140 new firefighters in the last 18 months, the next 40 of which should completely close our staffing deficit, begin the academy next week. So we're looking much better in that area, which was definitely needed. We have developed a process to enforce system access controls and tell staff. And as was mentioned, we've also had the roll call staffing manual reviewed by both labor relations and the city attorney's office. It was a review that was needed to just make sure that we were complying within the, within the constraints of agreements. Additionally, we have maintained a practice of having peak hour staffing for ambulances an option. However, we've been challenged with the physical ambulances, but that's something that we've also addressed, and we really appreciate the council's support on that with the purchase of new ambulances, and we recently received an update, a status on the, where we're at in receiving those new ambulances. So with the new staffing level and the ambulances, we feel confident that we should be able to begin more regularly placing peak hour ambulances in service, which will help with that service demand. I personally feel very fortunate that our firefighters stepped up and voluntarily worked all these additional hours during our staffing shortage. It allowed us to maintain service to the city and respond to over 88,000 requests for service last year. So with that, we will take all of these recommendations to heart and diligently work towards improving our overtime. Thank you.
Good question. Does the fire service have a CFO, a chief financial officer?
We have a financial officer, yes. The title is Support Services Manager.
Who's a firefighter?
No, civilian employee.
Okay. And who is that?
Denise Pinkston Moss.
Okay. Councilmember Harris.
Do you have a public comment?
We have a public comment, apologies.
So we have two people, Chris Andrew and McWhorty.
Evening, Mayor, city councilman, and city manager. Chris Andrew, Local 522. I want to thank the auditor for his report on the overtime. I think the overtime piece of the audit was excellent and showed, you know, the reason why we had the overtime was short-staffed, no fraud, no abuse. What we do take exception to is the complicated issues of staffing and the ambulances and efficiencies that you mentioned, Mayor, that are really, a lot, a lot more examination needs to be done on those rather than just simply with the auditor and his limited expertise on these issues. I think the fire department, and we would, Local 522 would strongly argue that the fire department is already extremely efficient. The fire department, through the standards of cover report, as you saw, the standards of cover from Citygate recommends four to eight more stations, including multiple ambulances. Our revenue is over $30 million a year, I think only second to Public Works, and our firefighters right now have the lowest pay, lowest benefits, and the highest workload in the region. So 522 is always open to working together and trying to find new solutions. 522 has been here for years since the recession, trying to do the best thing we can with the city and be good partners. What 522 will not do is risk the safety of our What 522 will not do is risk the safety of our members or the safety of the public in order to, again, try to get more and more efficiencies over what we've already done over the years. The Sacramento Fire Department is one of the most efficient departments in the city and in the region, and it's time for council to understand, and I want to just remind them, the standards of coverage show them the needs that we need of the fire department. And it's not the responsibility of the firefighters to sacrifice or find more ways to cut and risk our safety in order to fund the fire department. Thank you very much.
So I just, we're not going to debate or resolve any of the issues tonight, but I do want to suggest a course that I already know you're on here, Chris, and that is, before there can be a debate about public safety, there needs to be a common understanding of the facts, or at least the assumptions underlying the facts. And one of the things that 522 consistently says, that I've heard, is that the ambulance service is cost neutral. It is cost neutral because of the reimbursements. The city management and the finance director disagree. So I would hope that before we potentially argue about what the best means to save money is, that we first have a discussion, or at least try to get a common understanding, about whether or not EMS, which by the way, I voted in 1995 to give to the firefighters, and I don't regret the vote, because I think that's exactly what we should have, right? We should have firefighter and paramedics, and we should be responding in that way. But this argument, that by the way, is not a new argument, this has been going on for several years here. We need you to sit with the manager and maybe with the oversight of the council here and come to a common understanding about whether or not EMS is costing the city money despite the amount of revenue that it does bring in, there's no doubt it brings in some revenue, or whether or not it is in fact cost neutral. Because if it's cost neutral, then you're paying for it through the fees. If not, then there's a deficit, you have expansion needs, and you're right, we don't want to sacrifice the safety of firefighters or the safety of the public, but we still have to answer, how do we pay for the standards of coverage report? And you have to help us answer that if we're going to move forward together, my view. Councilmember Warren.
I was first in the queue.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Harris. I'm sorry, we got out of queue because I couldn't, everybody, I don't know, I screwed up. We do have one more public comment, and then we'll fix the queue. Okay.
So McWorthy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I love audits. First of all, the panel have to understand the difference between an ambulance and a fire truck. Once you understand that and quit trying to show these people what to do, you got the same problem with utilities. And let these people make those decisions. An ambulance and a fire truck is two different entities. You don't have to have them both at the same place. That's facts. Yes, you want to have overtime because those guys are underpaid. If I was over there, I'd beg for overtime too, because I got to pay my bills. But first of all, you don't have to be a genius to know that most of the fire truck calls is about medical. Common sense to tell you that. But when we look at the fire department, nobody mentioned you got a police department tied there. Why? When that call coming to the fire department, that's the guy that makes decisions, whether it's a police need or a big truck need. There's a paramedic that's on the big truck too. So you got a paramedic there, and when you said a paramedic don't have to learn how to fight fire, you let a fire start, he'll learn how to fight fire, believe me. Where you losing money and nobody saying a word is at the hospital. If you sit down and stop and think business, put the hospital out of hotel business instead of that ambulance sitting at the hospital for two hours before they move the person off the cart. Wow, that's your hospital problem. Why wouldn't the hospital have enough space and enough people on staff, time they come in, move them, and the ambulance take off? No, you are going the wrong way with your ambulance situation. Let the ambulance be separate and the fire department trucks be separate, and you'll solve many problems. Overtime, the union have already put in there money that they can spend overtime, while you question them on it. As long as they didn't commit a crime, what was the question? What was the argument? You know, give the guys a break. You know, we need them. Separate the trucks and the ambulance, and you'll accomplish something. But first, you look at the hospital time, that that guy had to stand there and wait till they move their person off their cart.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Do we have any other public testimony? Okay, we're going to go with councilmember Harris, even though I don't know how to turn on his mic.
I got it.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd also like to thank Jorge. This was a pretty interesting audit, and you brought up a lot of interesting questions for us to pursue a little bit farther. I don't have any specific questions for you, Jorge, but I do have a couple for the chief. So chief, looking at the overtime audit, certainly certain things caught my eye, and I know they did a number of members of the public. Jorge brought up the idea that after 72 hours, a person needs a break, but it seems like that has not been complied with numerous times. So how do you address that?
We were understaffed, and the intent of the agreement, which is what 522 and labor relations agree to, is that that was to prevent us from mandating someone to stay beyond that threshold, and in no instance was anybody mandatory to remain at work beyond 72 consecutive hours. There is no legal or regulatory statute that limits the amount of hours that a firefighter or a police officer can work without break. It's not ideal. We would like to get, you know, our staffing levels, I think, are going to allow us to, if not eliminate greatly, avoid the instances where firefighters really need to work beyond that threshold. But I actually am somewhat appreciative of our firefighters that voluntarily would work those additional hours to keep our companies open rather than run short in the city.
And then there were a number of firefighters who worked an extraordinary amount of hours in a year's time. I think one up to 6,000 hours, is that correct?
That's correct. According to the audit, that's correct. You know, there are some people that will put in a lot of additional hours, and we have a couple that would regularly step up when the opportunity was there to work those hours.
No, I appreciate the part of stepping up, but, you know, having been a workman my entire life, I put it to you that nobody can work three full jobs in a week and actually produce work that doesn't endanger themselves or others. I think actually it's a rather preposterous idea that somebody would put in those many hours and get, pay for that many hours, and for management to think that you're actually getting productive time from a worker in that situation. Seems to me we paid a lot of money for people to sleep or be walking zombies. You know, nobody, chief, nobody can work 6,000 hours a year, in my opinion. So I think that that's a failure of sort of the scrutiny of how this labor is used. And, you know, I get it, that it's voluntary, but there are limits to what people can actually do and produce. I think that requires a lot more scrutiny. So what I get from the audit is that people could self-report overtime, that it wasn't under the scrutiny of their supervisors. So do you agree with that supposition?
No. I mean, there was opportunity to enter overtime, but all that overtime was confirmed by management staff, and like was mentioned, was there was no fraud discovered during the course of this audit, and really...
No, I didn't suggest that there was fraud. I suggested that the system is such that someone could self-report overtime without direct permission from a supervisor.
No, I think the overwhelming majority of our overtime was not, it was for what we consider constant staffing. It's the number of positions assigned around the clock, because the fire department operates 24/7, 365. So the overtime generated was to fill those vacancies, you know, almost entirely. Very little of this overtime was for things outside of maintaining staffing levels to services city.
Okay, well, I don't think that exactly answered my question, but I'd like to move on to something else about peak staffing for ambulances. So did I just hear you say that with ambulances coming on, the new ambulances, you mean the ones we're replacing because of the diesel engine issue?
Yes.
And with increased staffing, meaning we'll hire more people from the academy this summer, and is that the staffing you were referring to?
We have roughly 40 vacancies, and we have 40 beginning in the academy next week. That will bring us up to fully staffed, and then it'll be annual attrition that we'll need to keep pace with, which is...
But you think that will give you the resources you need to do peak time, peak call time staffing?
Under current, within the constraints of existing agreements, which is that we make additional ambulances available on a voluntary overtime basis to work those 12-hour peak hour shifts, so that we put more ambulances in our system during the high service demands.
So when you say more ambulances, I mean, the ambulances we're getting are just replacements for vehicles that have shown to be problematic to the workmen?
Yes, but it's also our mechanical reserves, and when we don't have any mechanical reserves, then we can't offer up the opportunity for those additional shifts. When we do have mechanical reserve ambulances that aren't part of our regular staffing, but they're there to, you know, when we do have a mechanical issue with the frontline piece of apparatus, they can move into one of these reserve equipment. Well, when we have all of our ambulances in service, we still have additional reserve apparatus. When we have available reserve apparatus, we make that available for personnel to sign up to work additional on 12-hour shifts.
So voluntary overtime for peak hour staffing?
Correct.
Okay. And that's with the 40 new hires?
Well, the new hires and the new ambulances, well, you know, the ambulances being new, the likelihood of us having them up and running and having suitable mechanical reserves, both of those things greatly increase, the fact that we'll have personnel available wanting to work those shifts, and that we'll have sound ambulances to offer up to them.
So you and I had had a conversation about the PERS uptick that's coming over the next number of years. So how does the cost of new hires versus overtime compare when you factor in increased costs from PERS?
Well, that's an analysis that's probably better addressed by city financial personnel. But yeah, there is, as we know, increased costs for PERS that are coming.
Yeah. Okay, thanks very much, chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, a lot of ideas were brought up in this report that are very thought-provoking, and I think that the mayor hit the nail right on the head, that there's an awful lot of facts that one has to determine are correct, for one thing, and agree with the disparate parties to get them on the same page, to understand how to move forward when we talk about single role or three-person engines, or even how overtime is managed, or the possibilities of 12-hour shifts. There are a lot of ideas that are tossed out there where I believe that they should all be on the table. Of course, we're not negotiating a fire contract until 2018, but this is a good time to make all the parties get to the table and at least agree on the facts that we're addressing to make these kind of decisions, to find out if there are more efficient ways to run the department, and if there are efficiencies that would actually save us money. So I look forward to that happening. I know that our city manager is interested in doing this and bringing the parties to the table. And Howard, can I ask you a question? You said you were going to start that process as soon as next week?
That's correct. We're scheduling with the representatives from 522 to start having those discussions along with our finance team.
Well, I think it's important, because these are big decisions, and, you know, I have said in the past that I was attracted to the idea of single role paramedics as a way to get diversity on the force and create opportunities for young people. But the first things first, we have to actually agree on the facts, and once we achieve that, then I think we can make realistic decisions moving forward. So these are issues we can tackle in the future. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move approving the fire audit.
Okay, that's been moved, seconded by Vice Mayor. We have, councilmember Warren has some comments. Did you?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a couple for the chief. Please, Walt, can you come back up for a sec, please? And I wanted, I had heard that we had made a lot of progress in hiring, and so I think that's a really good thing. How many people did we hire, or we have in the last, say, 18 months? Was it 100 and...
Over 140 in the last 18 months.
140, okay.
With 40 starting the academy this, next week.
Okay. And I know previously we had talked about, you know, some areas of deficiency in terms of diversity and that kind of thing, and in terms of these 140, how do we do, based on your recollection, in terms of, you know, providing opportunities to, you know, across, you know, across the sectors, and in terms of addressing some of the deficiencies that we saw in the report, I think it was about eight, nine months ago when we had a discussion at a previous council meeting?
We've done better. We still have, there's still obviously room to work. I don't have those specific numbers in front of me right now, but I did provide an update to the assistant city manager. I can make sure that we work through the city manager's office to provide you with an update as well on the recent hirings and the diversity of those groups. We did establish, what I did establish was a diversity advisory board, and now it's become a diversity advisory and equity board, and it's a cross-section of the membership in which I've asked them to really look at best practices in non-discriminatory hiring and provide me with recommendations and methods on how we can improve our diversity, and most of those include recruiting from within the city that we serve.
So are we fully staffed now as a fire department, or are we still hiring?
When this academy graduates, which is end of summer here, basically five months, we will be at our staffing levels with, you know, annual attrition of 15 to 20 that we see due to retirements. So we'll have an annual need to probably hire at least 15 to 20 on an ongoing forward basis, depending on the size of the organization or the, where we're at with the age of our workforce.
But the majority of the hiring is done within the last 18 months or so.
Yeah.
And so it was my hope that we have, we will be able to show some progress as it relates to, you know, being a more inclusive department and, you know, opportunities across the sector, all the various folks that live in the city. And so I would look forward to receiving the report, you know, the report I think you gave to the assistant city manager.
Yeah.
That what you said, you provided him.
I gave him the latest demographic.
So I would be interested in just understanding of these last 140 people or so, kind of, you know, what that body of people, you know, really represent, look like, and how that reflects kind of some of the direction that we had asked the fire department as well as the police department, and across city, you know, all sectors, we had asked to really look at some of the areas where we felt like we could do better, and this obviously was one of them, you know, the fire department. So I look forward to receiving the report.
Appreciate it. What I can tell you is, how we were able to close that staffing deficit was by having back-to-back and even overlapping academies, and by greatly streamlining our process. We moved to utilizing the state hiring list, which allows us to have open continuous recruitment. Additionally, we made other changes and outsourced background and reduced the, not only the cost of about 50, 60,000 per test, but we reduced the recruitment, the candidate processing by about four months, which allowed us to catch up, and now that we're caught up, and throughout that, we kept a focus and interest on diversifying our workforce.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, a point of clarification, more than anything else in what we're doing here, the recommendation is to approve the audit, and I thought I heard you, or someone, say that by approving the audit, we are directing the city manager and the fire chief to implement the recommendations.
To, yes, but I think implement in the broad, in the broadest sense of the word, right? To begin looking at the recommendations, to begin discussing them with the relevant parties, and to try to achieve the underlying objective of the audit, which is to save money, so that there may be an opportunity then to put that saved money into increasing fire capacity and paramedic capacity, because the standards of coverage report says that's necessary. That's the way I take it.
Some of the, some of the recommendations can be implemented by the city manager. Some of them will have to be up for contract negotiations.
Correct.
What I want, don't want to do is to do anything that's directive in nature in this format. If we want to direct the city manager to do some, a particular action, I'm all for that, but not in this format, because I want to understand the implications pro and con for each recommendation, if it's directive in nature.
It, it asks the city manager to sit down with the union and explore some of these cost savings measures, which is his job anyways. It provides some ideas that are not new ideas, but does provide ideas with which to begin and continue that conversation. Go ahead, Howard.
So, as part of the auditor's quarterly update on the status of the recommendations, I will be working with the fire chief to look at those specific recommendations, and if some of those can't be implemented, it will stay as such, as part of Jorge's updates on a quarterly basis, is that right?
It's semi-annual, so-
Semi-annual.
Yeah, every six months.
And so, we can-
And in the event that something can't be implemented, there is the opportunity for us to report back to council that, the reason why something can't be implemented, and then we ultimately would categorize that as a recommendation that gets dropped. And that has happened from time to time when circumstances have changed that have actually created a situation that no longer warranted the implementation of a particular recommendation, but-
It's, it's like an environmental impact report. You shall do the following unless there's a statement of overriding considerations. In other words, you can come back, Howard can come back and say, "We can't do this because it's not feasible," or "We can't do this," and that will then be part of the, part of the eventual conclusion of the audit, correct?
Many of the recommendations-
One of the recommendations is to receive and file, and we're not doing that. We're saying, "This is directive in nature," and understand there are twelve recommendations that the fire department is accepting. There are eight that have to be negotiated, and I don't even know which ones they are. So, if we're going to be directive in nature, we're going to have to get into more detail which ones are approved and are going to be implemented, and which ones will have to come through negotiations, which should be then our negotiating process. So, I recommend, instead of approving, we just accept and file this.
Let, let's, Mr. Sanchez may have an interpretation for us here. What does it mean to accept?
Council has heard tonight the findings, and clearly there are findings laid out in the report, and the findings do have recommendations. And with, with this form of government, the city manager is the day-to-day administrator who carries out the policies of the council. This report I see as kind of a laundry list of items that the auditor has recommended, but doesn't have the power to implement those, because that's not his role under the government. It is the council who would look at this, and by giving it approval, you're saying, "We think that these proposals have some merit. We are authorizing the manager to take them forward and engage with the fire department and other stakeholders to walk through these, and come back at the points that the manager deems appropriate to update the council." Now, some of these will go into labor relation items. Council is not pre-committing here anything in terms of labor relation direction. That'll have to be down the road, once the manager comes up with that laundry list of the recommendations that can be worked out, and proposals that can go forward, and then be presented into the labor negotiation side. So, it's really a, a very preliminary step of a number of steps down the road, that the manager will be key after he hears comment from the council, and the level of comfort that council has with the proposals.
You know, I-
Okay, I won't belabor the point, but it seems like to me that the city manager has authority to talk to the fire chief and the labor at any time. He doesn't need our approval for that. This seems to me to be going another step further, saying that "We endorse everything in this report, and we want you to go work it out." And in order for me to vote on that, then I'm going to have to understand exactly what things they are. I'm going to have to hear both sides of the argument and make a decision, just like we make any other decision.
Would you agree with the way-
So, if it's accept and file, I can deal with it. If it's, I approve everything without hearing both sides of the discussion, I can't vote for it.
Would you agree with the way Councilmember Carr characterized?
Mayor and council, there is a level of detail that's attached with this. There are findings that are made by the auditor, and those findings will guide the manager's approach if council accepts this, at this point. It, it will suffice in a manner like a direction from council. So, there is some, some, the, the concern that's being expressed here, I think, does have some-
Let me put it another way. If, if Councilmember Carr votes yes on this tonight, as, or any other colleague, are they agreeing that single role ought to be the policy of, of the city as negotiated with, with the union?
I, I would, I would say it's not that final that they are agreeing that this is the way to go, but what they are saying, that this is, as recommended by the auditor, a possible solution for this.
Possible solution. Thank you. I think that's as clear as it gets. These are possible solutions that we're directing the city manager to pursue, and to look at, and then to work with us iteratively, to work with the union, to work with the community, to determine in the end-
And bring back-
And bring back to the councils. That's what it is, right. It's-
And we worked with the manager's office and with the department to word those particular recommendations in a way that they could move forward with them, but we're not, we, we didn't make the recommendation that we'd actually implement single role. The recommendation is that we consider implementing single role, and so that initiates the process of continuing that, that work to see whether or not that's a viable option for the city of Sacramento.
I wouldn't make more of it than it is, but I also wouldn't want to send a signal to make less of it than it is, because we want to have a discussion about this, and where it goes, we don't know. But I worry if we weaken it now to receive and file, that, that will send a different kind of signal. I think Jim Sanchez said it, you're, you'd be voting to consider this as one possi-, as a possibility, among other possibilities.
I would be more comfortable if that was the motion.
Okay, maybe we can make that specific, maybe we can clarify exactly what it means in the motion. Fair enough. We'll do that. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you. As very often happens up here, I totally agree with Councilmember Carr. Almost exactly what I was thinking. First of all, I aired all of my concerns about the budget and audit, got that all off my chest in the budget and audit committee, so I don't feel a need to rehash that today. Those who heard it needed to hear it, and it's out there. But for me today, my, my struggle is exactly as Councilmember Carr has laid out. There are, and I appreciate Jim's input, because I think the way I'm hearing what Jim's saying is, this is, what you're asking of us is one step farther than receive and file, which is one step farther than we usually go with audits, and I'm not comfortable saying that these sixteen or however, eighteen recommendations are, are number, are top priorities. For one thing, Councilmember Harris had some other ideas that aren't included in here that I think should still be on the table, too. I don't have a problem at all with our city manager pursuing the discussions. In fact, I initially wanted to start my comments by thanking the mayor and the city manager, who both have worked really hard and taken in a lot of meetings with fire admin and 522, and I believe both are in a position where they really do want to find either operational efficiencies or increased resources to be able to meet those upcoming needs in the fire department. I think we all want to do that. I would absolutely not be comfortable accepting the recommendations today, which actually, by the way, I think a slightly different answer than what was given to the mayor during budget and audit when we accepted them there, because I don't think that we should look at those eighteen items in exclusion of anything else that would be a potential solution to our problems, and I don't think that the, any of those items, I don't think that the appropriate presenter of those solutions is the auditor. I would like to see the professional fire service folks present to us what they think the department should look like, particularly on the six or so items that really have to do with staffing. And this audit's parameters were overtime. We're also approving an EMS audit upcoming. Why would we make a decision about EMS, or even a direction about EMS, and at the same time tell them we want an audit on EMS? So, I would be more than happy to follow in Councilmember Carr's, well, you didn't really, I think Councilmember Harris said some of these same things, and, and Daryl did, too, in the sense of first things first, and it's their, it's Howard's job anyway to bring us back answers to these questions. These are ongoing questions and things we have to discuss. We have to discuss single role, and we have to, you know, I think we've, I would say we don't need to discuss three-man, four-man. We recently had that conversation, and the council came to a conclusion, and while I didn't hear the chief say it tonight, I have heard him say many times, "That's really not an opportunity in Sacramento." So, for one thing, I think that's a waste of time. It's one we've looked at. We have another report that came back from an auditor not even five years ago that said, "No, Sacramento can't do that." We brought in experts and consultants, and they all said Sacramento can't do that without building a bunch more stations, so why would we waste time on that particular proposal if we could be looking at other ways? And there are things not in here, like treat, not transport, that happen in our county when metro fire shows up, but don't happen when we show up, and that is an increased revenue source, actually, the chief explained to me, that would help our budget. Our rates are under the correct rates. That is something we should be focused on. Our rate of recovery, our billing system is a problem, something I know that Jorge will bring us more information on after the EMS audit. That is definitely going to be a focus of this group. There have been other presentations over the last few years about cost recovery in the city of Sacramento that we let go, like on hazardous waste from, on accidents caused by folks from out of the region that come in. It's a $1.2 million item. So, if we're really serious about what are the ways to increase the revenue, to offset these costs, to really lay out under the standards of coverage what we want to see accomplished, I would not want to see us limit the discussion here. I also don't want to stop the discussion. I want Howard to keep moving forward and talk about single role, and, and do the things to go meet with the group to get to the baseline. But I am most comfortable doing that under a receive and file with this audit, because I don't want to leave something off of the table, and I don't want to include something that this council hasn't properly vetted but for through an auditor's report, and I feel really strongly about that. And, you know, for me personally, I have some pretty strong feelings on a couple of the recommendations, and I wouldn't support us moving forward looking at them, particularly without more information. Three-man to four-man is one of those, something that we, we already talked about extensively on this council. So, you know, there are some great findings in here, the overtime stuff, the administrative stuff, twelve of these items. Some of them have been handled since through hiring, and the peak ambulances are great, and I think you did a good job of explaining that once you're fully staffed, you can do the peak with the overtime, and it brings us back into the realm of reasonable use of overtime, so that you're only get, using it for these peak ambulances, and/or for when people go out of the city, and then we get reimbursed for those costs. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with those, but most of them have already been implemented or underway, and are good, solid findings. But I personally will not vote to move these eighteen items forward to the exclusion of anything else, and I, I don't think this is the right time for us to change what we have done in the past on these receive and file items, but I do want to offer my support to the mayor's comments, as I appreciate what you said, that we want to meet the standards of coverage, and you said it with Girl Scout cookies in your hand, which was extra convincing. Right? You're going to open and share, right?
Yes.
But anyway, so my point, I think we're all, what I heard was everyone pretty much on the same page, just different mechanisms for how to get there, and I think my personal comfort level doesn't allow me, including with Jim's explanation, which I think is a fair and good explanation, to take that extra step to say, "I want to get behind these." Because I know how this works. It'll come back later to say those were the recommendations of the council, and I don't believe that they are.
So, let me, if I may, because I, I want to, I'd like to come out of this with the unanimous vote. If we can't, we can't, because I, I want to try to assure that we don't, we don't send mixed signals. So, I want to suggest a motion. I'll turn it over to Jeff and Jay in a minute. I would suggest the motion be that we accept, yes, that magic word, accept the audit, and then say, "In accepting the audit, the council is asking the manager to consider the cost-saving options described as findings and recommendations in the audit. Nothing in the motion is either a final direction of council, nor an exclusive list of cost-saving options available for the manager and the council to consider."
Daryl, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can we also add that it, that, that it also doesn't identify any of the recommendations as our preference for how we move forward?
I think in saying "consider," we're not stating a preference, we're not stating a non-preference. You, what you're asking, as I hear it, is sort of stated non-preference. I would say-
I'm trying to get to where I can support it, right?
I understand. I'd like that.
It has to be a little bit, I, I want to walk away feeling like no one can come back to the dais and say, "You guys made this your preference, and so that's what we're working on." Particularly, I think it's dangerous with the three-man crews, because that can be brought back to us to say, "You have to build ten more stations." That's what it did last time.
I, I, I-
If, if we're not issuing a preference, then I can get behind your motion as well.
I would, I don't know how to put the word "preference" into here, but I can tell you that the intent of the motion is to not state any particular preferences, but simply to ask the manager to consider all of these. Consider them seriously. Talk to the stakeholders. Talk to everybody about it. Come back to work with the council, work with the community iteratively, and nothing is a final direction.
So, can you just add that language that you just said, that sentence, that nothing is intended to be a statement of preference to your motion? Because if so, then I can support it.
I, I worry about that signal, and I want you to support it. I, I do. I'm, I know, you know, this is always the danger of legislating from the bench, as they say. It's kind of fun, actually, but, but I'd like to find another word other than preference. So, let's turn it over to the mem-, other members here, and maybe we can figure out a, another word, okay? Councilmember Harris?
So, Mayor, I understand what just happened. You offered a motion, and it was seconded, a substitute motion. I was going to restate my motion. You beat me to the punch, but I believe you have a second.
I do have a second. I'm trying to also accommodate Councilmember Ashby to see if we can work it out, because I'd like a nine-o vote here. ADO, sorry. ADO. Sorry. But, so, keep going, and I'm thinking about-
Okay, well-
P-word.
Let me just say a couple things. So, I think that these are good recommendations to consider, okay? As far, I'm, I'm not really worried about the word "preference." What I want to do is enable the manager to take these findings, and to have the discussions necessary to consider all of these as possible solutions, not exclusive. There are other things that we should definitely consider, and you're absolutely right. In emergency medical response, we can look at a total revamp of that system as, as a possibility, and put that on the table. So, nothing exclusive here, nothing saying that these findings are the only things that we look at, or, I, I would agree. I, you know, I, as far as preference goes, at this point, it's too, too determined a preference, because these discussions are very deep and have a lot of facts to consider. So, maybe you could use a little bit more generic terms. So, let me just share what I came up with for, for, to revamp my motion, and see if this would work for you. To receive or accept these recommendations as worthy of discussion, as possible solutions to difficult issues, but directing the manager to pursue these discussions of the findings and bring them back to council for further discussion.
So, okay. Well, can we work with, can we work with my-
But I think we're on the same page as the direction we're trying to get to, which is enabling the city manager to initiate discussions around these findings, to look for-
How about, how about this, how about this, Jeff? Nothing in the motion necessarily states a priority direction of council, necessarily states, because it may state, you and, and you and I may dis, and you and I may disagree in the end on what the priority should be, so it necessarily states. I think it's a priority. You may think- I think it's a priority, you may think it isn't. We leave it to the manager to go pursue, and then we're going to have a debate here eventually, comes to the collective bargaining agreement or the other policy directions. That's as far as I would go. Nothing in the motion necessarily states a priority direction to council nor an exclusive list of cost-saving options.
So I can second that.
Okay.
I can just clarify one thing. Our audit reports, when they're brought forward, have consistently been to accept. They haven't been-
What, Jorge?
But, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out things going forward. I don't want to change kind of how we deliver our reports.
You don't, don't change a thing.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, and I'm going to say this too, if there's a criticism that you provided too much information, provide as much information as you want as the auditor. And then we will figure out, as the policymakers with the city manager, how to use that information, distill it, and make decisions accordingly. Find us information.
Fair enough, thank you.
Transparency. There we go. Okay, so I got a substitute, we got a motion here, but let's hear from Councilmember Shneer.
So just, you're withdrawing your motion and-
No.
You're the substitute now? Okay, so that's what we're talking about. All right, so, I'm sorry, I've been doing this six years, and so first time we've had this discussion. I think we're spending a lot of time talking about something that we probably don't need to talk about. The city manager has the ability, the first twelve recommendations are all operational, they're under the city manager's purview. We can accept that or not, but that's up to the city manager to go forward with. We will, at some point in the near future, I assume in closed session, have a discussion about our bargaining with 522 and the parameters around that bargaining. That will cover, and I think all of these things should be on the table, whether we said yes or no five years ago. We didn't say no, but we didn't get to a contract negotiation with that, so I think there's a very nuanced difference on that. I think all of it needs to be on the table. I think anything that 522, as far as cost savings and efficiencies and better serving our public can bring to the table, they should bring to the table. That's a whole nother discussion that we're going to have, and we're not going to have it at the dais, because it's collective bargaining. So whether we say accept or whatever, I personally don't want to go through this discussion every time Jorge-
We're not going to. We're going to clarify what accept means.
Oh, I think you've done a good job. I think you need to go as far and abroad as you can, because these are going to be difficult times for us, there's no question about it. And the mayor talked about, it's 2023, we'll have $29 million a year in additional purse fees that we're going to be paying. We want to keep Laney as sane as possible, because 29 million is a lot of money, and it's going to just keep ramping up. So I'm fine to support the motion, but I just want to separate the audit report and the good work that you've done, all of the audit reports that we have accepted in the same manner over the last six years that I've been here, and all of the time you guys, I think we're overblowing this one. We're not-
We are.
We're not pushing anything onto anybody and the city manager, we're just asking him to do his job.
And by the way, if everyone reads it carefully, some of the more controversial items are specifically called out for further study.
Right.
As opposed to the recommendations that are more binding, that aren't controversial. So we're fine here. None of the, nothing in the motion states necessarily a priority, any priority direction of council, nor is an exclusive list of cost-saving options available. So go with it.
I get it, I'm supporting that. I just want to say, in the future, we don't need to have this discussion ever again.
Can I, but, yes.
I'm totally serious.
No, but we are going to have the discussion about all the issues that underlie this report.
Absolutely, but that is-
That's the bottom line. Not through this mechanism, I understand.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Eric?
No, I just want, look, to keep it short, I want to highlight that point. I think this conversation actually questions our process that we've had for the auditor. I mean, when we had parks up here and we audit them, we didn't ask for another park expert to come up and provide the recommendations. When we had the SHRA up here, we weren't questioning, you know, who should be providing that. That's the role of the auditor, you know? Should give more advice out there. But my point is, I think, I'll begrudgingly supporting your motion, Mr. Mayor, but I don't want to set this as a precedent to question or to change how the function of an auditor. Auditors come in all the time, whether it's a business or whatnot, and they provide their independent recommendations and analysis, so.
I didn't quite get that.
Say it again.
Yeah, exactly. So you didn't quite get that, so, again, I don't want to quite question, I mean, we need to make sure we maintain the, so it's more on the process than it is the recommendations. And I think that's what's troubling me. I get your clarity, and I get your intent and the spirit of your mission.
Fine. Keeps the council together. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Torture's over, measure passes. Okay. Thank you all very much. We do have public testimony now, and then we will adjourn.
Okay, so we have about ten or eleven that have signed up to speak. We'll start with Gregory Glavonovich, followed by Henry Gordon and Pastor Gainesborough.
Kabbalistic Jews say, at the end of time, a stage of perfection can be reached, and all problems will be solved. Many problems to discuss at City Hall. If Mayor Steinberg does a good job, maybe he'll be governor someday. If Alan Warren does a good job, maybe, with a very difficult district too, maybe he'll be state senator someday. Tonight I talk about how to increase investment in the Sacramento area. I read that city council members get free Kings basketball tickets. So what? Is that broadening your horizons? A better activity? Send a councilman or four or five other people from City Hall down to Orange County to rub elbows and make friends at the John Wayne Tennis Club. It's now called the Palisades Tennis Club in Newport Beach. Get them a membership instead of Kings tickets. Or find country clubs that people from Newport Beach and Laguna Beach go to. Give people from City Hall memberships, then socialize, make friends, get them to invest in Sacramento. There's a book in the sixties, As Orange Goes, So Goes the Country. There's filthy rich people in Laguna Beach. In the seventies, Richard Nixon and Barbra Streisand almost moved into the neighborhood. My sister lived by Bette Midler and O.J. Simpson. President Obama had a party next door to my brother's home. Send some City Hall representatives to country clubs near the Hamptons and Forest Hills in New York. In the nineties, I used to live in Forest Hills on the poor side of Queens Boulevard, but I saw beautiful homes in Forest Hills. In Laguna Beach, I worked in a '76 gas station, Mercedes-Benz drove up to the self-serve pump. My boss said, pump his gasoline right now for him. If you don't know it by now, he's chairman of the board, and he happened to live around the corner in Emerald Bay. President, CEOs, owners of major companies, and rock stars live in Laguna Beach. You can't, you get rich people to invest in Sacramento.
Hey, Greg.
Does Rush, I go over?
Yes, sir. I may have to ask you to wrap up in the next 10 seconds, okay?
As Rush Limbaugh said, you can't get a job from a poor person. Get rich people to invest here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, Henry Gordon?
Good evening, Mr. Gordon.
Hi, I'm Henry Gordon, and I represent the local Sacramento chapter of Amnesty International. And tonight, I'm here to express support for refugee resettlement efforts in Sacramento. We're in the midst of the worst refugee crisis since World War II. There are something around 65 million people who have been driven from their homes by violent conflict in recent years. And here in Sacramento, there are four refugee resettlement agencies operating, the International Rescue Committee, Opening Doors, World Relief, and Sacramento Food Bank Family Services. In 2016, these agencies helped more than 3,000 refugees establish homes in our area. Sacramento's refugee population has greatly enriched our community with cultural diversity and a variety of valuable skills. At a time when refugee resettlement is being challenged, threatened, and reduced by the administration in Washington, we think it's especially important for cities like Sacramento to share our positive experience and affirm support for refugee resettlement efforts. The recent executive actions targeting immigrants and refugees are cruel and discriminatory, a clear violation of human rights and American values. We deplore the travel restrictions, detentions, and deportations that have already taken place. Now, I understand the council might be considering wider-reaching decisions and actions related to refugees and immigrants. I know that those efforts are going on at all levels of government in California, and I hope that the council indeed is looking in that direction. But in the shorter term, Amnesty International would like to ask that the council recognize the urgency of the current situation and pass a resolution specifically in support of refugees and put Sacramento on record as a welcoming community. Our group has developed some draft language for such a resolution, which we hope you'll consider in the near future.
Thank you very much, Professor Gordon, and we'd be more than happy to get that. If you can give that to the clerk, it's already in the works?
Yeah.
Yes, and that, those suggestions have already been shared with us-
Councilmember Harris, stay right there for a second.
Henry, let me address that. Yourself, Ms. Rosenbloom, came to me with your resolution.
Correct.
And I put it in process. When we started more advanced discussions than the mayor appointed a task force to look at immigration and refugee issues, what they, they actually, we just spoke about it today. I was actually going to bring your resolution two weeks ago, but it was stalled out because they wanted to bring it into the bigger context of the discussion, which you just alluded to. So what I worked out with Councilmember Gera, who's head of the task force, is to bring Amnesty International into the conversation. So what we'd like to do is have you come to the table with the rest of the stakeholders as we build a new ordinance around immigration and refugees, so that all of your concerns are built into the bigger discussion. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Gera, but that's what happened with your resolution, because it was in the works. You brought it to me, I took it very seriously, and actually started the process well over a month and a half ago. But it's been sort of enveloped by a larger conversation. So Councilmember Gera?
Okay, Councilmember Gera.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Professor Gordon, first I want to connect you before you leave with Arturo Sanchez. Where's, oh, there he is, right there, who is our assistant city manager and has been working with the task force on that resolution. The city attorney's office is also looking at revising our current resolution to include the current day issue of refugees and immigrants. And just from a point of history, our original resolution came out of the Central American refugee crisis. So we want to make sure that we continue to highlight this issue. But not only that, the mayor has instructed us to move with a sense of urgency because of the current day-to-day issues impacting us. And we hope to have something very soon. The task force, which encompasses a, over twenty different organizations, such as like Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services, the number of bar associations, along with organizations like Asian Resources and La Familia Counseling Center, to work on this resolution. So I'll have our assistant city manager work with you, and we'll be glad to have you to the task force. And I did talk to our city attorney staff already to look at your language that you put in, so that's included in the overall ordinance that we're looking at, working at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Okay, so next then is Pastor Gainesborough, followed by, it looks like Robert Padilla, and then Mac Worthy, and Roxanne Fuentes.
Those who are going to speak, if you'd come to the front, that would help us tremendously. Good evening, sir.
Vice Mayor, Council, I'm glad we're ending earlier than last week, or some of our more elongated meetings. I'm glad that our chief is here tonight. I had the idea to consider that the city says that half of its 13.6 million dollar expenses on the homeless per year are on SAC Fire and SAC PD. So six and a half million dollars are spent being accounted out to SAC Fire. And when I look at, there's no faulting here, but maybe, maybe the SAC Fire Department could be set free from dealing with the homeless. Forty-five thousand medical calls, but only 2,500 fire calls. So that's about a 20 to 1 ratio. Now, instead of the SAC Fire having to deal with the homeless, which isn't really what your expertise is for, if we hired six navigators at 50,000 a year, that would only be a third of a million dollars. They could be on eight-hour shifts around the clock, another 200,000 for vans. Just stay with me, if you would. Why should SAC police and SAC Fire be pulled off their vital functions, spending six and a half million dollars on mainly social calls with the homeless? We can do more, as the city council has repeated. I've been coming to the council now every week for the last two years. Thirteen and a half million dollars spent on the homeless is basically putting out fires, but not fires that have caloric heat to them. Social fires that are better dealt with by, as the mayor has suggested, 100 clinically-trained outreach workers, or at least six or 10 more navigators, dealing with peer group counseling. Let's get the right, when you're putting out an oil fire, you don't put water on it. You put foam on it, you smother it. And so in dealing with the homeless, can we find out how many of the medical calls of, was it 40?
Pastor Gainesborough?
Yeah, I have to stop. Forty-five thousand, 45,000 medical calls, how many of them were for the homeless that navigators could have dealt with? Thank you, you're doing a great job, chief. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Robert Padilla?
Good evening, Robert.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. In the last six days, Roberto Padilla, Sacramento Firefighters, 522 spokesperson. In the last six days, there's been 12 working structure fires within the city of Sacramento, including a two-alarm fire in District 3 that affected a hotel. The police officer who rescued a lady in District 7. There was multiple fires in District 5, three in one day, to be exact. Up to 12 people have been displaced by fire. Multiple people were transported to local area hospitals due to these fires. You don't see this on the news, and you don't get the information properly sometimes to be able to make your decisions. It is important to understand that you cannot compare Sacramento Fire Department to other agencies that surround us. We have a very unique fire load, and we are known nationally for our fire call volume. The 45,000 medical aid calls that we respond to every year, you have to understand that that's how it's labeled. It could have very easily been an extrication, it could have been a water rescue that required 20 or 30 firefighters to be deployed during inclement weather, and there are other circumstances behind those situations. Just recently, there was an extrication on I-5 that shut down the freeway, and it required over 20 firefighters to work diligently to save the life of a person that resulted for circumstances that are irrelevant. But that could be labeled as a medical aid. It's important to understand the workload that our members do, and we want to share this information on a more routine basis. We feel that you need to be notified what's going on in your districts on a more routine basis, as far as what a working fire is, that smoke and fire showing. That is a lot of fires, just in the last six days. You will be very hard-pressed to find another agency, regionally, or maybe even statewide, that has that kind of call volume, especially from a fire load. It's important to understand this, because this is going to help you understand why does it take four people to staff an engine? Why do we do the things that we do? If you do not understand our call volume properly and look at the numbers properly and broken down, you will not be able to make the right decisions. We feel that there has to be better communication with council as to the activity of the fire department, and be more precise and more concise on a more routine basis. And a working fire impacts the community, not just life, but property, which means revenue, which means loss of jobs. We have to address this, and we have to get the right information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mac Worthy? Following Mac is Roxanne.
After, on audit, my request was said, we'd like to see an audit on the income at the arena. How many jobs are, also, SMRT, we've seen SMRT table here twice. We'd like to see an audit on that, because it got too many programs tied to it, and convert those programs into jobs, and people will fix their own property up. We want to move along, and we look at the hotels. Three hotels just closed, only one on construction. High TOT tax, when we come up, is down, people. You're playing a game with your mind. You ain't going to never have no big-time city out of no hotels. I'll tell you that now, because you haven't, you never showed the increase of people that come here and make decent money. You're looking at, so, well, we're going to have celebrities come in. You're looking at, so, well, we gonna have celebrities come in? That ain't gonna work in Sacramento. My wife just talked to a friend, has a paper in Florida. She didn't ask about Sacramento, she asked about some places down there, and how far we is from San Francisco and San Rafael. Just gonna show you, you know, she only published, she's in Florida, she published my wife's art. It gonna show you, people, it's more than you is your thinking. So you got to get on the right track and say, look, we go, now, when we look at the immigration issue, you can pass solutions on resolutions, but when you refuse to enforce the federal law, and you took an oath, I still lock them up. That go from the police department, city council, and mayor. When you refuse to obey the law, lock them up. That's the only way we can do it. Jones is respecting the law, but yet instead, you want a resolution, say, well, we not gonna respect the federal law. You can hate Trump, or you can like him. How many people have done that in Washington, D.C. that he have done? That's what you ought to be thinking about, getting that man here and make some money. Okay, on the homeless thing, your mayor, I didn't show up, but your mayor said we gonna have matching tax. How you gonna oppose Trump, and Trump gonna say, we gonna drain this trump and take your federal money? You wake up, you talking out of both sides of your mouth. We need jobs and people in this town to work.
Thank you, and I'm glad we can disagree on whether or not Sacramento's going to become a big-time city or not. I'm, I'm glad that we can disagree on that.
Roxanne.
Roxanne. Is Roxanne still here? Okay. Thank you.
Roxanne Fuentes, Sacramento. We've been trying for a few years, for many years, to save a seasonal wetland and adjacent field at Ramona Avenue and Brighton Road, which supports a wide variety of wildlife, tree frogs, garter snakes, audubon cotton tails, red tails, Swainson's hawks, and many others, and deer come down to this area also. And we just found out a few weeks ago that building or buildings had been approved for this area, and we hadn't seen any notices or about any hearings on this development. Subsequently, we found out the owner was AmCal, which is planning to build a five-story apartment complex on the field at 2010 and 2020 Ramona Avenue. This would be higher than the adjacent elevated light rail track, which is less than 50 feet away from the proposed project site. This is too many stories for this area, and it should be scaled back or not built at all. Not only that, but all the poor animals and birds have nowhere to go. We didn't come to the hearing because we didn't know there was a hearing, and we don't think you should allow this high-rise to proceed, and we think you should review this project. I was wondering if someone could call me, I left my phone number on those papers that you all have.
Absolutely. The city manager's gonna send this to the Community Development Department?
Yeah, because they're out there with bulldozers already, and I just don't think that this should go forward the way it's planned.
You, you want to speak directly to it, so she knows that we are moving.
I'm not familiar with this project, but there will be somebody from our Community Development Department to call you.
Okay.
But if there's bulldozers out there, I think they're pretty far along already, and this is...
Yeah, I realize that, but since I didn't even know about the, the hearing that they had concerning this, I had to come up here and speak, and maybe you could scale it back somewhat, because they haven't actually begun the building process.
Again, I'm not familiar with the project, but I'll, I'll have somebody call you tomorrow.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
And thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay, Janet Fricki, then Kim Church, and it looks like Arrows Sterling, Nikki Jones, and the last speaker, David Andre.
Hi, good evening, I think, good meeting, touched on a lot of important things. One thing I haven't heard discussion about yet is, regardless of how you feel about sanctuary cities and how you feel about President Trump, Sacramento being a sanctuary city, and Trump saying that they're gonna do federal defunding, as we know, Sacramento already has a homeless crisis. I want to applaud all of you for making big steps this year, huge steps this year, in working on, on the crisis. I do want to say, I know, Councilman Warren left, I absolutely support his idea of having an emergency place as Daryl Steinberg's permanent, and all of your, your permanent housing is going, going up. I'm, I'm very concerned with not having something like Mr. Warren's, with getting federally defunded with HUD, housing vouchers, food stamps from the feds. There's a real possibility, which I haven't heard any discussion, about possibly more than tripling the homeless now. I love the discussion about a destination city for Sacramento, but we need a Plan A, B, and C, besides having a tent city type, type of thing. There are still water fountains that haven't been turned on. It's, it's getting warmer. As we know, people that don't have shelter, they die in all four seasons. So thank God, literally, it's getting, it's getting warmer, but please turn on the water fountains, unlock bathrooms, my time is up, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down, Janet.
Kim?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. In late January, District 2, Councilman asked the council to allow him to suspend the anti-camping ordinance in his district only, so that he may coordinate shelter for his displaced constituents. This suggestion to discuss a partial moratorium obviously seemed to have fallen on deaf ears. Ironic, given that at last council meeting I attended, and tonight, in fact, much attention was paid to the importance of Sacramento being a sanctuary city, and how much effort this council was willing to engage in to guarantee the next group of displaced folks are treated humanely and with welcome regard. Ironic, given the resistance District 2 is now experiencing and attempting to provide temporary shelter to our local displaced residents yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Though I'm unaware of the status of the special events permit, I would hope that this council stop opposing the only current plan on the table to address the immediate shelter crisis. And by the way, opening a warming center for 40 individuals where police take an hour and a half to frisk people as they enter a space that does not provide a sleeping pad or a cot makes it a misnomer to count it as beds. Tomorrow is March, February is gone. We've seen immediate shelter coordinated in a matter of hours at CalExpo, to California declaring the Oroville evacuation an official emergency. This is why we advocate the city not only support Councilman Warren's efforts, but also officially declare a shelter crisis so that the rest of you could catch up to your colleague, ease the zoning requirements, so that our city plan addresses not only the long-term housing needs, which are very crucial, but also the current needs as well. I applaud Warren, I'm sorry he's gone for acknowledging his displaced constituents, and anyone who continues to oppose his plan is making his ability to uphold, uphold his oath of office more difficult. I applaud the courage and persistence that he had in opening, that he has in opening interim shelter in a city where statistics, I'm sorry, where shelter is statistically non-existent. This city spent $1.2 million to deepen two ponds. The city, the city spent hundreds of million dollars to subsidize billionaires. The city has dozens of empty buildings, and in a city where clear shelter shortage exists and where you don't want to erect tent cities, it's time to open up buildings, apply for emergency solution grants, and be the solution. It's downright embarrassing, and I really would like for you guys to get with the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Arrows, is it Arrows Sterling? Anyone with the last name of Sterling? Thank you.
And who's next after?
Nikki Jones, after Arrows.
Come on down, Nikki.
I'll get there first.
And then David, after her.
I'll start your time when you start coming down.
Hello, councilmembers, I wanted to explain a personal experience and also comment on the recent publishing of an article that I was reading. Daryl Steinberg wants to push all the homeless people up to the front of the voucher list and not apply for more funding for more vouchers. I think that you guys really need to look at the situation from a different angle. I actually received a Shelter Plus Care voucher, and it was extremely hard to find any housing. Reason being is that many of the apartment complexes don't accept the voucher, and there are very few apartments that actually do. And it, the minimum wait for somebody to get into an apartment is six months, and I've contacted over 100 apartments, and maximum is three years for the St. Francis Terrace Apartments that are downtown. I also wanted to say to Daryl Steinberg that it doesn't make sense to move people to the front of the list when there is no place to put those people in the first place, and that applying for more vouchers would be a smart thing to do, and that you need to get people to accept the vouchers on a, in a higher rate. Also, it doesn't make sense of why many apartment complexes accept the voucher, but then accept, expect homeless people to have an income, which doesn't make sense. And vouchers do not require you to have an income.
Can I?
Hold on, hold on.
May I?
Ms. Sterling? Look, come on back for a second.
May I?
Yes, Mayor Steinberg would like to address.
First of all, I want to thank you for coming to council, and I want to thank you for articulate testimony, and you have stated some, I think, very legitimate concerns about how we use these vouchers, but I just want to assure you of a couple of things, or at least explain a little bit about what the proposal is on the table is all about. First of all, it would not be vouchers alone, it would be vouchers combined with intensive services, mental health, substance abuse.
That's what Shelter Plus Care is.
And other, other services, with the active cooperation of the Sacramento Apartment Association. And my view is that if we commit to these vouchers, and we combine it with services, and we commit ourselves to helping get 1,600 or 2,000 people off the street over the next two years, that we can in fact do it. And if we set aside millions of dollars in addition for prevention and early intervention to make sure that people who are at risk of homelessness get the rental assistance they need or the other services that they need, that we can prevent more people from becoming homeless. And finally, I believe that we can do a better job on this list to accommodate both people who are at risk of homelessness and in need of housing, who have current shelter, as well as those who are currently on the street who have no alternative now, no alternative. Thank God you received a Shelter Plus Care voucher. That's one small category, but is not nearly enough. And so I'd be happy to dialogue with you more, and I really appreciate the fact that you come to the city council and you give voice to your concerns, because that's what it's all about. And I will be the first to tell you, I don't have the perfect answer here, but I know that the status quo is not working, as evidenced by Kim and everybody else who comes here weekly, and we're, we may disagree on some of the means, but we're all working very hard to try to make it better. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd also like to thank you, and you know, your concerns are exactly why I brought the micropad to Sacramento, because it's very clear to me that we're going to need housing options for people, whether they have vouchers or not, but if they have vouchers, as you said, it's very hard to find a place, and there's a long wait. So we're going to try to attack that piece from creating pretty affordable housing structures, but not marginal houses, I mean, fully-conditioned, electrified, and plumbed, small micro units for people of lower income, and especially for the homeless. And if we can achieve that, then we can use the vouchers with greater success.
Micro units under 400 square feet are illegal in Sacramento.
Say, say that again?
Tiny homes aren't allowed in Sacramento under 40, 400 square units in Sacramento, individualized ones, but if you were to prob, perhaps get some of the empty buildings that are around Sacramento to remodel their buildings and make them into smaller units, that would probably work a lot better.
Well, we're actually working all angles, so that's a viable idea, you know, one, one idea pitched by a county supervisor was take derelict motels and remodel them. That idea could have legs, so we're looking at all possible housing solutions. Just, just wanted to make that clear.
Ms. Sterling, I thank you for coming down. We deeply appreciate your conversation and your testimony tonight, and, and hopefully you'll stay involved in this whole issue and helping to advise us on how we can move forward.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, Nikki Jones, and then David Andre.
Arrows has been coming here for over a year, for sure, sharing this wonderful perspective. I'm glad you guys can hear it. I should take a moment to note and congratulate this council on being moved to act, to stand up, and to say that the status quo is unacceptable. I want to especially, I really believe that, like, it's been a long time, I really believe that. I want to especially thank Councilmember Alan Warren in his effort, continued effort to bring about something that people experiencing homelessness have been fighting for, for many decades, very literally, safe ground. The fight to improve and stabilize the quality of life for people living outside is something we all, in our own ways, have decided to take action on. The standout difference in Alan Warren's challenge to the status quo against any other ones that have come forward from this dais are as follows. Firstly, it is a proposal constantly driven by our neighbors outside, the largest stakeholders in these issues, whose voices should have always been centered in the conversation about a search for solutions. Listen to Arrows, okay? Their, their voices should have always been centered in this conversation. Nextly, it is immediate relief for folks waiting on indeterminable lengthy wait lists and queues, or worse yet, through the queue, voucher in hand, searching through a housing desert for the sacred water that are the words, "Housing Choice, Section 8, Accepted", when seen and traveled towards eviction, bench warrants, records, lack of income, rental history, all insured, it's truly just a mirage. Where can they be safe? Find relief, stabilization, and in the desert of downtown, quite literally, running water. Nextly, it does not set itself at odds with every other solution in favor of, with every other solution brought forward. Those in favor of safe ground realize the need and applaud the long-term attempts at affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, transitional with access to services throughout. Unlike opponents to an encampment, namely the mayor, we would, we do not attempt to reinforce the logical fallacy of a false dichotomy that, that says that warming centers, housing, and vouchers are somehow at odds with encampments and decriminalization. We know that all parts are necessary if we are serious about reducing trauma for folks living outside and helping support them towards stable housing. Speaking of trauma, I was troubled to hear the mayor two weeks ago speak of over 700 camping citations given out by SAC PD last year. His insistence that their stuff not being taken, a hollow positive when you take into account the destabilization of their lives, the threat and criminalization that happens in that moment. The $230 fine, this is totally my last thought, it's like 30 seconds, the entanglement in a criminal justice system that is nothing but barriers and oppression. For what? For existing poor enough to live outside in Sacramento? I take the mayor's casual recital of these facts as offensive to the lives of my friends outside, who repeatedly call this kind of treatment torture. I can only hope that all of you, and Emily Halken, believe it when she says diversity of housing is as important as quantity of housing, and believe me, that for people outside facing the elements and the, and the psychological torture of lack of privacy, this has to include a tent.
David?
Thank you, Nikki.
What she said, just like she said.
I know, she, she, she took up a minute of your time, so you got a minute.
That's okay, it's gonna be short and sweet. It's gonna be short and sweet. What's this frisking of people at warming centers? They're outside for like an hour, there's no toilet there, and you got them waiting in line, and they're gonna be frisked? What's, what's up with that? Is there, is there like any kind of evidential stuff that like people have been getting stabbed in warming centers in Sacramento or something? Because people are out, I know it's funny, kind of, but you're frisking people at warming centers, and they're out in the cold waiting, and then they get kicked out in the morning. So there, there's actually, it's like, are you guys trying to create a line so that people see how many people are coming to the warming center as they sit in the cold? It's really bad. I don't know why they're, you guys are having people, the police frisk people. It doesn't make any sense to me. The other thing is, we need some kind of shelter now for people. I know you guys don't want to declare a shelter crisis, I understand that any agency can do it, so a lot of us are going to be doing letter-writing campaigns and trying to get some type of agency to declare the crisis, because people are cold, and pretty soon it'll be hot, and we'll be in the middle of summer, and we'll have people dying because the water fountains aren't on. I applaud the efforts for the portable toilets, there's no portable toilets now, and our other toilets are still closed, pretty much. We need the toilets open. I've been saying this for about three years, we've got the same problems. We are seeming to go forward, but it's ever so slowly. The problem is, for people outside dying in the cold, it's, it's going too slow for them, they can't, people are dying off. I know a lady, she's 74, she lives in a car, she's scared every night, she moves her car like continuously, all night long, because she's just terrified, there's no safe place for her to park. What's she gonna do? Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. I know that next week, the managers informed me that we'll have the, the general order update that we did talk about a couple of weeks ago, that we'll be able that we did talk about a couple of weeks ago, that we'll be able to report back to the public around the issue of confiscation, which I know is of concern. Okay? Any member of the council want to speak? Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Couple of announcements I just want to get out to the public. Sacramento City Unified School District is having a superintendent search town hall meeting. It's gonna take place tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the John F. Kennedy High School. This is part of their superintendent hiring process, and they are seeking community input. They'd ask you to join the board representative and district staff to discuss the desired qualities of a superintendent at the town hall meeting, which takes place again tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at John F. Kennedy High School. And then on Saturday the 4th, we invite you to the Dr. Seuss Birthday Celebration. I know you don't want to miss out on the special celebration honoring Dr. Seuss, his birthday. It's gonna take place at the Robbie Waters Pocket Greenhaven Library at 11:00 a.m. Mayor Steinberg will be reading, along with former councilmember Robbie Waters, Assembly Member Jim Cooper, Library Director Rifka Sasse, myself, and many others will be serving as celebrity readers. Ask you to come on out there. I've got a great Dr. Seuss book that I'm reading, so... And I'm gonna get animated for the adults and for the kids. So come on out on Saturday the 4th at 11:00 a.m.
I am Daryl. Daryl, I am. Thank you.
Green eggs and ham.
Councilman Carr.
Dr. Seuss. Dr. Seuss Birthday. Do you realize he's a fictional character, right?
Look, man, don't feel my dreams.
No, he's not. He had a Geisel. He's not fictional, actually.
Just want to quickly announce our community discussion. It's gonna be this Saturday at the Bonnie and Samuel Pennell Community Center. This is our big event, where we invite the whole community out to talk about what's going on in the district. We're gonna be there from 10:00 until noon, Saturday, March 4th. And at each one of these meetings, I try to bring in a couple of business people from the area, to introduce them to the community and vice versa. This week, we'll have Ken Nguyen, who's the owner of Furnisher USA, right across from Kaiser Hospital, and Amit Prakash, who's the owner of the Red Roof Inn. Amit's gonna come out and talk with us and introduce himself to the community. So all of those in District 8, we'd like to see you on Saturday at 10:00 o'clock at the Pennell Center.
Love it. That's great. Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. So District 3 is a pretty diverse district, and part of District 3 is the River District. The River District, of course, has loaves and fishes and a lot of service providers for the homeless, but there's more to the River District than that. There's actually a lot of exciting projects coming to the area, and tomorrow, we're gonna be discussing them from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Smythe Academy, which is 700 Dos Rios Street. Things we'll be discussing are the North 12th Street Complete Streets Project, the North 16th Street Streetscape, Dos Rios Light Rail Station, Twin Rivers Housing Development, which is very exciting, and a new fire station 14, which I'm sure is of interest to all our firemen out there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Geda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to make an announcement. If you missed the Water Meter Town Hall on Monday night, last night, in Elmhurst, we want to make an announcement that tomorrow night, we will have another Water Meter Town Hall in Tahoe Park at the YMCA, Tahoe Park Community Center on 8th Avenue, right across from the softball fields, at 5:30. Again, this is to get information about our water meter installation, and how to get information, when it's going to happen at your house. MetersMatter.org, that's the website, metersmatter.org. You can get a lot of information there. And at MeterMatters.org, there's a map that'll tell you when the instruction, when the installation will happen. I'll have a number, postcard information, and a sticker on your door to let you know when that's happening. But come out tomorrow, March 1st, at Tahoe Park. The last is, we're starting up the Tahoe Park Food Truck Events. Again, great opportunity to get to know everyone. I'll have my office hours there as well, as always, at Tahoe Park, starting on March 24th at 5:00. Hope you guys can make it, and it'll be the 4th Friday of every month. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councilmember. Thank you to all the members. Thank you to the public. Thank you to the staff. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.